We're starting. Okay, everybody, we have a quorum. Our other members will be joining us shortly, but first, if you can all please rise and help me salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bill Lopena stepped away. Councilmember Adam has stepped away momentarily. Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Engler.
Here, thank you. We do have a request for a continuance, and if the clerk would like to read that for me.
We have a request to remove Consent Calendar Item 7H, the Fats, Oils, and Grease Facility Improvements Project, CI 5441. It will be pulled from the agenda for further review. And there was a supplemental item on this item.
Very good. And Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Yes, we do, and I'll go ahead and open that. This is the time and place for public comments. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence. And so far, we have two individuals who have signed up to speak in pursuit to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes.
Very good. I believe, Madam Clerk, we have Andrew Garl on Zoom.
Actually, Mayor, our first speaker tonight will be Karen Martin on Zoom.
Very good. We'll have Karen Martin then. Ms. Martin, are you in the house or on Zoom?
Are you saying Karen Meyer or?
Martin, Karen Martin. Madam Clerk, do you still show her on?
One moment, Mayor. Let's move to the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Jeff Schwartz. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and good evening, council members. I'm Jeff Schwartz from Thousand Oaks. The massive COVID spending packages over the past two years have created a $5 trillion increase in the national debt. Our children and grandchildren are going to be held responsible for paying back those $5 trillion. Worse, these huge spending packages, plus a reckless monetary policy, have resulted in record-setting inflation that we are now facing. Inflation is caused by government debt. Government pays for its debts by printing new money out of thin air, thus increasing the money supply. Now imagine if we were to double the money supply. You might think that's great. We get all this extra money. But that extra money chases the goods, raises the prices, and we end up paying for all this through inflation. We're paying more and more at the gas pump and grocery store, and that's a result of last year's reckless spending and borrowing. The U.S. borrowed $3 trillion last year. They're borrowing $3 trillion this year, and this reckless borrowing leads to more and more inflation. What's concerning is this could spiral out of control. If a taxpayer doesn't get a pay raise to keep up, 7% inflation might seem bad enough. But imagine if it's 15% or 20%. Or what if the reckless politicians in Washington and Sacramento turn us into a Venezuela, where they have 100% inflation in a month, and they've destroyed the currency? That's what can happen when they promise us something for nothing, because there is no free lunch. So when the government offers us free things, say, "Hey, we'll give you a free COVID relief package." It isn't free. They're going to print up money to pay for it, and we're going to get stuck with the bill through inflation. To make things worse, we complied with harmful strings that were attached to these programs. We shut down small businesses, then required them to lose even more money by demanding they reduce their hours and reduce the number of customers allowed in their stores. We weakened the economy, caused inflation, ended up hurting the working class and small businesses we were trying to help. As a result of these harmful spending bills and mandates, we don't need more handouts. We don't need more mandates dictated by Washington or Sacramento. Instead, we need freedom. Freedom works. Freedom is the answer. I'm Jeff Schwartz, Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Karen Meyer, followed by Ronald Meyer.
Good evening. People choose a place to live for several reasons: close to work or family members, affordability or climate. Most families choose an area for two specific reasons: they want a safe place to raise their children and good schools. Those are the reasons I'm here tonight. I moved to TO 29 years ago, when Thousand Oaks was one of the safest cities in America. But the world has changed in the last few years: civil unrest, rising crime rates, racial tension, and perhaps the worst change is the surge in school shootings around the country. Sick individuals who target the most vulnerable of our society. We can't continue to do what we have always done and expect it to be enough to protect our children. There are solutions, but no one seems to be talking about them. Resolutions and written policies against violence and hate won't stop a 9-millimeter round. Bullets don't recognize age, gender, race, or religion. I'm here tonight to ask this city council to partner with the CVUSD School Board and Administration to make improvements in the security at our schools. Working together would lessen the fiscal impact for both entities. The money's there. We need to take action now to protect our students in the future. There are several areas that need to be explored. Improve the perimeter fencing with privacy screens to block the view of students in outdoor areas. Equip every school with security cameras covering all entry and exit points, as well as hallways and outdoor areas. Increase funding for school resource officers. I know the city pays for our resource officers currently. There is one research officer assigned to each high school, and those officers must divide their time between the elementary, middle schools in those pots. They can't be everywhere, and there is no guarantee that they will be present if and when an emergency occurs. I'm here to ask the city council to partner with the CVUSD School Board and Administration to provide armed resource officers at every campus in CVUSD. There are plenty of off-duty police officers and retired veterans who are trained to deal with an active shooter situation. I'm sure they would jump at the chance to protect children, teachers, and staff from any threats to our schools. I would be happy to participate in a joint parent-community task force to look into these and any other avenues in order to secure our campuses. There always seems to be money to support projects around our city, but I can't think of a project more important than protecting the children of Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ronald Meyer is next up, followed by Billy Martin.
My name is Ron Meyer from Thousand Oaks. I'm a little confused. My utility bills, water, electric, they keep me informed as to how I'm doing regarding saving and efficiency of my usage of the utilities, particularly water. My wife and I spoke to our water company, and they told us that we were the poster children for saving water, that they had us compared to past years, to our neighborhood, and to the city, all right there. So my confusion comes from the last acorn that I read, where it says that the city council is going to spend $9,500 per month to hire water nots, oh, I'm sorry, no, I should call them investigators, to patrol Thousand Oaks and observe the citizens to see how they are handling their water usage. Now, I have heard many times this city council and previous ones talking about how little money they had, and they didn't have enough money for everything. We have just heard from another speaker talking about the need, the absolute need for security for our children on our school campuses. And yet, the city council is going to spend $9,500 per month in order to spy out information that should be available to you for free from the very utility companies you deal with. That is not comprehensible to me, and I would like the city council members to explain to me, to the audience, and to the people who are going to be voting in November, how you can justify wasting that amount of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martin, followed by Sean Reddenhour.
My name is Billy Martin, and I'm a Thousand Oaks lover. And I'll always be a Thousand Oaks lover, even though I don't live here anymore, so technically you could kick me off the podium, but I don't think you want to do that. I was going to bring up the election of 2010, when I ran on affordable housing. At the time, I never thought that I'd be leaving Thousand Oaks because of affordable housing. But I'm very happy in Camarillo, and I'd like to invite each and every one of you honestly to my apartment, see what affordable living is like. And Al, it's a killer walking town. But what I really like to talk about today is public art, something I've never talked about here before. Public art often defines cities, Sydney, the Opera House, architecture, that's art with science. The Louvre itself is Paris. And of course, the arches in Kansas City and St. Louis and Needle Point in Seattle. So as much as cities are defined by public art, especially when it's beautiful, you might realize that sometimes public art isn't pretty. And in all the years that I'm a historian, actually, on this thing, Crazy Horse has been built for so many years, but as far as the copper curtain, it was the first time I ever got involved with Thousand Oaks. I'm getting a little reminiscent, it's 22 years ago.
Thank you and good evening, council members. I'm Jeff Schwartz from Thousand Oaks. The massive COVID spending packages over the past two years have created a $5 trillion increase in the national debt. Our children and grandchildren are going to be held responsible for paying back those $5 trillion. Worse, these huge spending packages, plus a reckless monetary policy, have resulted in record-setting inflation that we are now facing. Inflation is caused by government debt. Government pays for its debts by printing new money out of thin air, thus increasing the money supply. Now imagine if we were to double the money supply. You might think that's great. We get all this extra money. But that extra money chases the goods, raises the prices, and we end up paying for all this through inflation. We're paying more and more at the gas pump and grocery store, and that's a result of last year's reckless spending and borrowing. The U.S. borrowed $3 trillion last year. They're borrowing $3 trillion this year, and this reckless borrowing leads to more and more inflation. What's concerning is this could spiral out of control. If a taxpayer doesn't get a pay raise to keep up, 7% inflation might seem bad enough. But imagine if it's 15% or 20%? Or what if the reckless politicians in Washington and Sacramento turn us into a Venezuela, where they have 100% inflation in a month, and they've destroyed the currency? That's what can happen when they promise us something for nothing, because there is no free lunch. So when the government offers us free things, say, "Hey, we'll give you a free COVID relief package." It isn't free. They're going to print up money to pay for it, and we're going to get stuck with the bill through inflation. To make things worse, we complied with harmful strings that were attached to these programs. We shut down small businesses, then required them to lose even more money by demanding they reduce their hours and reduce the number of customers allowed in their stores. We weakened the economy, caused inflation, ended up hurting the working class and small businesses we were trying to help. As a result of these harmful spending bills and mandates, we don't need more handouts. We don't need more mandates dictated by Washington or Sacramento. Instead, we need freedom. Freedom works. Freedom is the answer. I'm Jeff Schwartz, Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Karen Meyer, followed by Ronald Meyer.
Good evening. People choose a place to live for several reasons: close to work or family members, affordability or climate. Most families choose an area for two specific reasons: they want a safe place to raise their children and good schools. Those are the reasons I'm here tonight. I moved to TO 29 years ago, when Thousand Oaks was one of the safest cities in America. But the world has changed in the last few years: civil unrest, rising crime rates, racial tension, and perhaps the worst change is the surge in school shootings around the country: sick individuals who target the most vulnerable of our society. We can't continue to do what we have always done and expect it to be enough to protect our children. There are solutions, but no one seems to be talking about them. Resolutions and written policies against violence and hate won't stop a 9-millimeter round. Bullets don't recognize age, gender, race, or religion. I'm here tonight to ask this city council to partner with the CVUSD School Board and Administration to make improvements in the security at our schools. Working together would lessen the fiscal impact for both entities. The money's there. We need to take action now to protect our students in the future. There are several areas that need to be explored. Improve the perimeter fencing with privacy screens to block the view of students in outdoor areas. Equip every school with security cameras covering all entry and exit points, as well as hallways and outdoor areas. Increase funding for school resource officers. I know the city pays for our resource officers currently. There is one research officer assigned to each high school, and those officers must divide their time between the elementary, middle schools in those pots. They can't be everywhere, and there is no guarantee that they will be present if and when an emergency occurs. I'm here to ask the city council to partner with the CVUSD School Board and Administration to provide armed resource officers at every campus in CVUSD. There are plenty of off-duty police officers and retired veterans who are trained to deal with an active shooter situation. I'm sure they would jump at the chance to protect children, teachers, and staff from any threats to our schools. I would be happy to participate in a joint parent-community task force to look into these and any other avenues in order to secure our campuses. There always seems to be money to support projects around our city, but I can't think of a project more important than protecting the children of Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ronald Meyer is next up, followed by Billy Martin.
My name is Ron Meyer from Thousand Oaks. I'm a little confused. My utility bills, water, electric, they keep me informed as to how I'm doing regarding saving and efficiency of my usage of the utilities, particularly water. My wife and I spoke to our water company, and they told us that we were the poster children for saving water, that they had us compared to past years, to our neighborhood, and to the city, all right there. So my confusion comes from the last acorn that I read, where it says that the city council is going to spend $9,500 per month to hire water nots -- oh, I'm sorry, no, I should call them investigators -- to patrol Thousand Oaks and observe the citizens to see how they are handling their water usage. Now, I have heard many times this city council and previous ones talking about how little money they had, and they didn't have enough money for everything. We have just heard from another speaker talking about the need, the absolute need for security for our children on our school campuses. And yet, the city council is going to spend $9,500 per month in order to spy out information that should be available to you for free from the very utility companies you deal with. That is not comprehensible to me, and I would like the city council members to explain to me, to the audience, and to the people who are going to be voting in November, how you can justify wasting that amount of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martin, followed by Sean Rendineo.
My name is Billy Martin, and I'm a Thousand Oaks lover. And I'll always be a Thousand Oaks lover, even though I don't live here anymore, so technically you could kick me off the podium, but I don't think you want to do that. I was going to bring up the election of 2010, when I ran on affordable housing, you know. At the time, I never thought that I'd be leaving Thousand Oaks because of affordable housing. But I'm very happy in Camarillo, and I'd like to invite each and every one of you, honestly, to my apartment, see what affordable living is like. And Al, it's a killer walking town. But what I really like to talk about today is public art, something I've never talked about here before. Public art often defines cities, you know. Sydney, you know, the Opera House, architecture, that's art with science, you know. The Louvre itself, you know, is Paris. And of course, the arches in Kansas City and St. Louis and the Needle Point in Seattle. So as much as cities are defined by public art, especially when it's beautiful, you might realize that sometimes public art isn't pretty. And in all the years that I'm a historian, actually, on this thing, Crazy Horse has been built for so many years. But as far as the copper curtain, it was the first time I ever got involved with Thousand Oaks. I'm getting a little reminiscent. It's 22 years ago this year, and I love those double twos. And it's not too late to pull something off. I could build this thing for the cost of a granny flat in the backyard of some old TO place. And I've never heard, in my entire history, of revised public art. And actually, the city did revise it. But we could un-revise it and put a different slant on this city. It would be the most visible public memorial document, oh, dedicated to -- we'll have a mayor's ball, and we'll dedicate it to past mayors of Thousand Oaks, and each of you will be up there. Anyway, 2020 was great, the last of the greats, you know, Dennis Gillette and Andy Fox, and of course, you guys ran as a team. And you were there, Bob. I got to say, Bob is the most qualified person I have ever seen sit in that seat in Thousand Oaks. He's been there the whole damn time. And he was right there with Andy the whole damn time. And I shouldn't use the word "damn," I guess. But anyway, I'd like to invite you to rethink something. This is a reinvention. This is not an invention. And one of Thousand Oaks' favorite artists. I don't know how many of you have seen Joe Sabiri's work. This isn't Billy Martin's. This is my concept, but it was Joe Sabiri. He is a favorite son of Thousand Oaks. One of the biggest criticisms of public art is, why couldn't you get a local guy to do it? Well, you got a local guy to do it, and you got him to do it for, like, nothing. And I'm doing it for, like, nothing, too. It's a legacy for me. Anyway, kids, give me a call. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Next up, we have Sean Rendineo.
Hello, council and staff. My name is Sean Rendineo, and I am a resident of Thousand Oaks. What a huge moment this is for the arc of my life, my first public comment. I know I can't speak to any council members directly, but I live in a city whose foundations were set by a councilman here. I started my college career at Loyola Marymount, like a councilman here. A coffee bar that I opened with my wife served as the live interview spot, leading up to the recent elections that saw two councilmen get elected. And a councilman has been connected with my story ever since she presented me a plaque from the city at my Eagle Scout Court of Honor. I'm honored to be here. As I've developed from child of Thousand Oaks to autonomous inhabitants, I face the same questions everyone has from the classes of 2000 to 2020. Is it financially worth it to stay in this place that I love so much? From our wife and I, it was a definite yes. But what that meant for us, the ramifications to that question and that answer, is that we couldn't be passive, and we also couldn't just see the city as an investment opportunity, but a community that we wanted to invest in. I seek to be an ally in many of the dreams that each of you have for this community and the things you guys have all run on, an external asset, hopefully, in helping ideas turn into action. The vehicle that I see being the best tool for this is, unfortunately, defunct, the Business Roundtable. I came here posing the question of whether it might be time to bring it back. Beyond its prior iteration, I hope that it can encapsulate more than just deciding what sizes and colors store signage should be, but being a true roundtable of ideas, brainstormed by those who are active in this community. People like Brittany from Naughty Pine, Drew from Oak and Iron, and Lauren from your CBD store, all within walking distance from here, they have hopes for this city beyond just increased property values. We seek street fairs, beautiful trails, public art, and the fostering of active transport. We are the members of the community who have proven that we can take an idea and turn it into action items. Use us, utilize us, and with any luck, we can work together to help Thousand Oaks become better because of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Indika Jayaratna. I apologize, I know I did not do your name justice.
You're good. Hello, everybody. Hi, everybody. My name is Indika Jayaratna, from United Construction and Landscape, and I'm here to talk about one of the projects I bid two weeks ago, Conejo Canyon Bridge Project. And I'm the low bidder of this project, and Public Work Department disqualified me because they said our company is not qualified to do this project. And anyway, we have a right license and a right qualification and right experience to do this project. I'm lower than, like, $150,000 lower than the second bidder, second lowest bidder of this project, protesting why we pay $150,000 more public money disqualifying first bidder. And I'm a local contractor, and I was living in 18 years, Thousand Oaks, city of Thousand I'm kind of protesting. I already submit my protest letter, and I have some paperwork to submit, if you guys somebody want to take.
You can hand it to the clerk there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. That's our last public speaker for the evening. Did we get Karen back? I don't see her on the list here.
No, she did not join.
Mr. Powers.
Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor. Just a few follow-up items specific to the--
Mayor, if I could interrupt. I believe you have one other card, Jeff Schwartz?
Oh, okay.
Hold on one second. We'll get this straightened out.
All right.
Yes, Jeff Schwartz. They might be speaking on other items. Are you speaking on other items before us tonight, other than the 8A? We'll be getting to that shortly. So when that item comes up, we'll have a public speaking for that as well. This is just general public's comments.
Just following up on a few items, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the question regarding the water patrols, as a reminder to the council, part of the regulations that were imposed upon us with this drought require an enforcement plan, and that enforcement plan, all agencies across Southern California are required to submit that. Those patrols are part of our enforcement plan. They are really geared at looking for overwatering that's occurring during those times, and it's also to combat all of our ratepayers, who will be subject to significant fines laid down by Metropolitan Water District if we are not successful in reaching those conservation targets. On top of that, we anticipate that at least partial reimbursement from Metropolitan Water Services on the costs associated with those enforcement plans. In regards to questions about arts and culture, just as, and frankly, the Business Roundtable, as a reminder, as part of our general plan update that's underway, we have two elements that will touch on just those areas, which is our cultural arts element. We're looking forward to that, which is going to have a public art component to it, and our Business Roundtable and discussions about community involvement and economic development will be tied in with the economic development element of the strategic plan, general plan. And then finally, in regards to schools, the speaker was correct. We do provide school resource officers at the high schools, and the city of Thousand Oaks does fully fund those positions, which is fairly rare for cities to do that. They are not at all the locations. There's a significant price tag associated with that. That said, the city council does have a long history of funding projects collaboratively with the school district. Many of our sports facilities are examples of just those things. And so as we move forward, we'll certainly look for opportunities to continue to collaborate with the school district. And then finally, the gentleman that mentioned the Conejo Canyons Bridge Project, that'll be before the council next Tuesday night. The bid award for that, we are aware of his bid protest, and as the council knows, there is a formal process associated with that. That's it.
Next up, we do have our consent calendar. Colleagues, any items to poll? Ms. Bill de la Peña.
Not an item to poll, but to move approval.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0. And I have ordinance titles to read. The two ordinances are: Ordinance Adopting Specific Plan Number 22, 325 and 391 Hampshire Road, and its associated general plan amendment, and authorizing the land uses and development standards in said specific plan. Applicant IMT capital V, Hampshire LLC. Ordinance Number 1699-N-S. And Ordinance Approving a Development Agreement, 325 and 391 Hampshire Road. Applicant IMT capital V, Hampshire LLC. Ordinance Number 1700-N-S.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going a little bit out of order. We're going to be moving to item 8C, which should be fairly brief, and we are happy to welcome a new member of our city staff, and I'll have Mr. Powers introduce her.
Yeah, as is tradition, like to introduce new members. We're having more and more of that these days. It's really a pleasure for me to introduce Tara Tossato. Tara joined us just three months ago from the county of Ventura and is already doing some amazing work as our Revenue Operations Manager, and so I'll hand it over to Tara. Welcome.
I'd like to open the public hearing first. So, hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8C regarding the annual collection of delinquent wastewater service charges, property tax. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city, and we currently have zero speakers.
Very good. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Engler and council members. The report before you outlines the city's routine practice to ensure payment of delinquent wastewater service by attaching a direct assessment to the property owner's property tax bill. From March 2020 through December 31st, 2021, the city complied with all COVID-19 executive orders and moratoriums, pausing certain disconnections, penalties, and collection enforcement actions. This is the first time the city is attempting to attach delinquent charges to the county property tax bills since 2019. During the year, wastewater customers are notified about their delinquent balance on each monthly or bimonthly bill, plus follow-up reminder notices for each new bill that is passed due. Annually, two separate letters are sent to inform the property owner that the city intends to attach the passed due amount to the property tax rolls. Additionally, in 2022, the city applied for and received state funding for delinquent accounts. The city applied for $400,000 for delinquent water accounts and $295,000 for delinquent wastewater accounts. To put this into context, when finance started the process in May of this year, we identified 161 wastewater accounts with delinquent amounts totaling $57,158.96. During the subsequent weeks, some customers responded to the notices and paid. Customers continue to pay, bringing the amount subject to attachment today to 93 accounts totaling $36,620.23. This is a very small number of accounts to be attached compared to the 38,000 total connections. It's less than 1/4 of 1%. Today, the delinquent amount is less than $37,000. This year's delinquent balance is approximately 30% less than previous years. We anticipate that by the time the final report is due to the county auditor's office, it will be less. Staff recommends that city council adopt the resolution and approve the list of names, parcel numbers, and amounts that will be submitted to the county auditor controller for inclusion on the property tax bills. And staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much, and nice job on your first presentation to council.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any questions? Ms. Bill de la Peña.
If there are no questions, I move approval of staff recommendation.
We will, we do not have any public speakers, so before we take the motion, we'll have to close the public hearing. Any questions from my colleagues? Very good. We'll close the public hearing. Mr. Bill de la Peña.
Move approval of staff recommendation.
I would just say the program's pretty effective at 99% collection rate.
99 and 3/4.
Oh, thank you, Bob, for that clarification.
Yes. Yes. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0.
Very good. Then we're going on to our next public hearing, the next public hearing, and Madam Clerk, if you'd like to announce it.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding multifamily residential apartments and parking structure at One Baxter Way, APNs 6800230695 and 6800230715. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for the city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Fifteen people have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to council standards, are allowed three minutes each. The applicant is allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First up, we have our applicant, sorry, staff report. Please go ahead, staff. Mr. Contrash.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The project before you tonight is a request to construct a residential, multifamily residential building, and also a four-story parking structure at One Baxter Way. Before we proceed to the project details and evaluation, staff would like to go over the recommendation on the project that is before the city council tonight. Staff has recommended that the city council adopt and certify EIR 2021-71100 that was prepared for the project in accordance with SEQA. Staff is also recommending that the city council approve the general plan amendment to change the subject land use from industrial to high-density residential on 8.8 acres of the property. It also includes the zone change from M1 to SP23, and also a specific plan to establish SP23 with specific development standards. The entitlement also includes an RPD for the construction of 264 multifamily residential units, and it also includes a development permit to construct a four-story parking structure and associated improvements, a development agreement specifying project benefits and responsibilities, a land division to subdivide the 42.9-acre property, and to establish two legal lots of record for the project. And finally, the project also includes a protected tree permit to allow the removal and encroachment of several oak and sycamore trees. As far as the proposed project, the subject property is 42.9 acres. The proposed multifamily residential development includes four buildings. The project also includes one four-story parking structure building. The total unit count is 264, of which 34 are affordable. The project also-- The project also includes subterranean and surface-level parking, and as I mentioned, oak and landmark tree encroachments and removals, and also a land division and a specific plan for the project. Here's an aerial photograph of the subject property. It's outlined in red. You have Thousand Oaks Boulevard to the north, and you have the 101 freeway to the south. And as demonstrated here, you have an existing industrial office building with surface-level parking to the north of the property and an expansive lawn to the south side. As far as the existing conditions of the subject property, there is an existing 416,000-square-foot industrial building that was constructed in the 1980s, which provides 1,245 office parking spaces. And there is an expansive lawn area that is characterized by steep slopes and also mature trees in between the industrial office building and the 101 freeway. The site has been previously developed, so there is existing infrastructure. There's water, sewer, and storm drains on the subject site. There are two points of access to the property from Lakeview Canyon Road, and there also is a bridge existing on the western portion of the property between the site and the promenade. There are sidewalks on both sides of that bridge. Here's an aerial photograph demonstrating the surrounding land uses on the subject property. Highlighted in the pink circle is the location of where the proposed multifamily residential buildings will be located. In the orange square is where the proposed parking structure will be located. And you can see here, you have the existing industrial office building to the south of those proposed buildings. To the west, you have existing commercial at the promenade, and beyond that, you have Westlake Boulevard, and you have Thousand Oaks Boulevard to the north, and you have Lakeview Canyon Road to the east, and you have the 101 freeway to the south. Beyond Lakeview Canyon Road, you do have existing industrial offices. And to the northeast, you have an existing school. And then beyond that, you have open space land uses. The areas here demonstrated in the blue circles are the existing public transit stations that are surrounding the property. Here's an existing view of the subject site, as you see it from Lakeview Canyon Road. This is looking towards the subject property towards the south. You can see there the surface-level parking area where you would have the proposed multifamily residential buildings. And on the left side is where the existing industrial office building is located. Here's another view of the subject property. And in this picture, it's from the 101 freeway looking towards the north. Again, that expansive lawn area with the mature landscaping up to the perimeter of the site. This is looking towards the northwest as you're heading towards the Westlake exit. A little bit of background on the proposed project. It's gone through various stages of the planning review process. In February of 2021, the city council did allocate the 264 units on the property. The applicant did come in later on, in May of 2021, with a pre-application for review by staff. Thereafter, in August of 2021, the formal application was submitted for the project. And in November of 2021, kickoff meeting to start the EIR process. In February of 2022, we did have a scoping meeting for the project EIR. And then in April 15th of 2022, the draft EIR was circulated for public review. And then on June 13th of 2022, the project was before the planning commission. And now here, June 28th, we are before the city council. As far as the project modifications since the allocation, since it was allocated units, the applicant team took city council and staff recommendations, including public comment, and submitted formal applications with substantial revisions to the project. These revisions include an increase in residential units from 240 to 264, an increase in affordable units from 29 to 34. The revisions also include expanded common open space area, such as the dog park and children's play area, enhanced sustainable features that include, but are not limited to, 6% of industrial parking spaces that are for electric vehicles, 10% residential parking spaces that are dedicated to electric vehicles, charging stations for EV bicycles, long-term bicycle storage, car share programs, and also all-electric units. The project also includes 120-square-foot learning and tutoring room that is specifically dedicated to children residing within the proposed development. And here's the review process for the project. This here is provided graphically to demonstrate the many steps in the planning process. The initial step was the prescreen where the 264 units were allocated. Thereafter, the pre-application was submitted to iron out development requirements, then the formal development application supplemental stage where the project was further refined. Thereafter, staff began environmental review and proceeded with the draft EIR. Then on June 13th of this year, the planning commission made a recommendation for approval to the city council, and now the project is before the city council, which is holding a public hearing for the council to take final action on this project. As far as the project overview, here's the project site plan. As demonstrated here, you have, again, Lakeview Canyon Road to the east of the property, you have the 101 freeway to the south, and you have the promenade at Westlake to the west beyond an existing drainage course, and you have Thousand Oaks Boulevard to the north. You have two points of access demonstrated here in the green arrows, two points of access off of Lakeview Canyon Road, and then you also have one point of access on the western portion of the property to the promenade. The residential buildings are identified here in the purple, and you have the proposed parking structure identified in the blue. And then you also have the existing industrial office building identified here in the gray. As demonstrated here, you have an internal access road that would be modified as a result of the proposed project. The internal access road would provide enhanced connectivity between Lakeview Canyon Road to the existing bridge to the west. As far as the open space and conceptual landscape plan, the applicant has made several modifications to include common residential open space, pool terraces, an expansive lawn area between the existing, or sorry, the proposed residential buildings and the existing industrial office building, a community garden, resident dog park, and also landscaping around the perimeter of the proposed parking structure. Staff would like to note that all landscaping and irrigation improvements shall be designed and installed in accordance with the city's guidelines and standards for landscape planting and irrigation. All landscape plans shall demonstrate compliance with the State Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. Also, prior to the issuance of any permits, complete landscape and irrigation plans reflecting compliance with all imposed conditions of the project shall be submitted under separate permit for review and approval by the city. Here is the floor plan of the multifamily residential building unit types. The residential buildings do provide 67 studios, 119 one-bedroom units, and 78 two-bedroom As far as the affordable component of the project, as I mentioned earlier, they are proposing 34 affordable units. 16 of those would be in the very low-income category, and 18 of those would be in the low-income category. These affordable units will be required to be dispersed throughout each floor level of buildings A and B. The project also includes an affordable housing agreement for an ongoing affordability, which will be restricted to the units for 55 years. Staff would like to note that the applicant is proposing 34 affordable units without a density bonus. As far as parking, the residential component of the project does include 435 parking spaces. 435 are required, 435 are provided, and they also include 132 guest parking spaces. The guest parking spaces are not required for the project because of the affordable component, but the applicant is providing these guest parking spaces, and this proposed parking for the residential component is consistent with the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code. As far as the four-story parking structure, because there will be surface-level parking removed as a result of the proposed multifamily residential, a proposed parking structure will be part of the project, which would provide 925 parking spaces. The combined 925 parking spaces and the surface-level parking result in 1,279 total parking spaces for the industrial office, which results in a surplus of 34 parking spaces from what it is today. As far as the protected tree impacts as a result of the project, the site does support 430 protected trees. Of those, 325 are oak trees, 104 are California sycamore trees, and there is one black walnut tree on the site. The project includes removal of 31 protected trees, which include three coastlive oaks, two valley oaks, and 26 sycamores. The removals are a result of the proposed residential buildings outlined here in the red square and the four-story parking structure outlined in the red circle. The project also includes encroachment into 63 oak trees, 35 sycamore trees, and one black walnut tree. Due to the 31 removals, the project will require 93 replacement trees. Of these, 47 will be planted onsite and 46 will be planted offsite. The site cannot accommodate the planting of all required mitigation trees. As such, conditions of approval have been applied to the project that allow the community development director to approve offsite planting for public benefit, or provide an in-lu cash payment to the city's open space endowment fund. Therefore, with the inclusion of the recommended conditions, this request will not be contrary to the general purpose and intent of the oak tree ordinance and oak tree preservation and protection guidelines. As far as the project elevations, here's the elevation plan of the proposed residential buildings. As shown here, Building A is approximately 45 feet tall with an overall average height of 34 feet. Their architecture is contemporary, modern style, with building materials that include smooth stucco finish, cement and metal panel siding, multi-pane windows, recessed vinyl windows, decorative window trim, roof cornice, and transparent panel railing. The proposed buildings incorporate roofline variation and vertical and horizontal articulation, designed to reduce building size, mass, and scale while maintaining compatibility with existing surrounding development. As far as the four-story parking structure that's proposed for the project, as demonstrated here, it will be approximately 55 feet tall with an overall average height not to exceed 50 feet. The elevation at the top demonstrates the structure as it faces the 101 freeway, and the elevation below facing west towards the promenade. As shown here, the proposed four-story parking structure is designed to be compatible to the existing industrial office building at the subject site, which is shown here on the bottom right-hand side. Here's some visual renderings of the project that's provided by the applicant architect. On the right-hand side, you have the existing industrial office building identified in the blue arrow. Then you have the proposed residential buildings identified in the orange with the common open space area between the parking structure and the residential units. And in the green, we identify the existing bridge that's between the proposed residential component of the project and the promenade to the west. Here's another architectural rendering of the site. This is a shot looking towards the south from the intersection of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Lakeview Canyon Road. Again, you have the subterranean parking proposed at the project with the residential levels above, and you have the existing mature landscaping at the perimeter of the property. This demonstrates what the project would look like looking at the subject site from Lakeview Canyon and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Here's another architectural rendering. In this case, you're looking at it from the interior courtyard area between the residential buildings. You have the common open space, the common community room on the left-hand side with the rooftop terrace above. You do have the open courtyard area in the middle, and then you have the residential units with their balconies overlooking that open space courtyard. Beyond that, you have the open space common area between the parking structure and the residential buildings, and the parking structure is identified in the purple there. The project also includes a development agreement, which set forth public and private benefits and responsibilities resulting from the project, some deliverables and expectations to ensure public benefit. This includes residential units, sustainable components, and also project amenities. It sets the term for completion to seven years. As part of the development agreement, there also is a learning and tutoring room for children that reside on the subject site. And there will be all-electric appliances and all-electric units as a result of the development agreement. And also, the project would include 34 affordable units with no density bonus. As far as the environmental review process, as I mentioned earlier, there was a scoping meeting done back in January of this year. The purpose of that was to gather input from stakeholders in the community and provide us feedback on the extent of the environmental analysis for the project. We did circulate the draft EIR from April 15th of 2022 to May 31st of 2022. We also included AB 52 and SB 18 for tribal consultations, which concluded on June 28th. None of the consultations resulted in any modifications to project mitigation or findings for the EIR. And then we did provide the CEQA findings for the project, which include the mitigation and monitoring reporting program, and also the response to comments to the agencies. And we also provided the final EIR to the planning commission for their review and consideration. And now we are here with the city council for the certification of the final EIR. In conclusion, the proposed project is consistent with the city's general plan and the city council goals, is consistent with SP23 and applicable city standards and policies, compatible with surrounding land uses, that the project has been designed to minimize visual impacts to surrounding properties, and the proposed project would not be detrimental to public health and safety and general welfare. With that, staff recommends that the city council adopt the certified final environmental impact report in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and recommend approval of the subject applications based on the findings as subject to the suggested conditions of approval included in the draft resolution and the ordinances. That concludes staff's presentation. I'll be available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Contreras. Colleagues, any questions? Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, right now, there is a bridge. I guess you'd call it a bridge between the promenade and the projected development that we're talking about tonight. And there's a gate across the bridge, and I guess that's because the promenade's private property versus what we're looking at tonight. Anyway, what I'm getting at is, if this project is approved, is there going to be changes to that bridge? I'm assuming the gate would go away? Are they going to widen it or anything?
Based on the project plans and discussions with the applicant team, the gate would remain as part of the project. However, there will be access maintained between the promenade and the subject site. There is pedestrian access available. There will be no expansion of the existing bridge as a result of this project. Basically...
The gate will remain?
That's my understanding, yes.
So the access will only be pedestrian, then?
Yes, because the applicant has designed the project to secure access only for the project residents and for the subject property at One Baxter Way.
Okay. All right. That's good to know. Actually, that's probably for the best anyway, because, which leads me to my second question. You know, we've had a big push on making projects walkable, pedestrian-friendly, and there was a statistic in the report that stuck out to me about vehicle miles traveled. And it said that this project would generate about 8.99 vehicle miles traveled. Is that per day that we're talking about? On average? I think...
Yes, it is. Hi, Kathy Nowell. I'm in Public Works.
Right, sure. Hi.
Yes, that's correct.
And then what was interesting is the average resident goes almost twice that, 15 miles in vehicle miles traveled, based on the staff report. Is that correct?
Yes. So if you can picture, it's the citywide average. So if you have somebody living out on the west end of Newbury Park, let's say, in Dos Vientos, just to get to the freeway, it'll probably take them about five, six miles to get to the freeway. Where with this project, they're right on the freeway. So it takes the average of all the vehicles' miles traveled in the city to give us our city average. And then they look at this traffic analysis zone to determine what's the vehicle miles traveled for the residents that are going to live there. And that's why it's literally half as much.
Ah, I see.
Because it's looking at where it's located. And it's not just all work-related trips. It's like all the trips, school trips, shopping trips. And because it's really an infill project, shopping's really closed, the boulevard's really closed, work is closed because there's, you know, so that's, it's also closer to Los Angeles than the west end, so that's why it's so much less.
I see. So it's proximity to the freeway is part of it that keeps the VMTs down. And then I'm assuming proximity to the promenade as well, where people can just walk across that bridge and get to all the shopping that they would want. Okay. Well, that's kind of what we're looking for. All right. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Mr. Jones.
Yeah. Could you put that slide on the screen again showing sort of the bird's-eye view of the completed project? The artist's rendering? Oh, is this, you can't put it on this screen. Put it on that screen. Yeah, I'm tired of looking at myself. I'm trying to get a feeling for the ingress and egress. I'm trying to get a feeling for the ingress and egress. It looks a little complicated. At the top of the screen toward the right, is that a driveway that goes out to Lakeview Canyon?
Yes, Commissioner, sorry, yes, Councilmember Jones, that access road between the industrial building and the residential on the far right-hand side is what leads to Lakeview Canyon Road.
And there's another driveway to Lakeview Canyon a little farther north, is that correct?
The the access points to the subject site will remain the same. The only thing changing from right now is you have the internal access road that is going to be realigned between the Lakeview Canyon Road and the bridge, but there is perimeter access and circulation around the northern portions of the residential buildings. And I think I could better demonstrate that with the project site plan.
Are there two driveways under Lakeview Canyon?
Yes, there are, yes.
Okay, and if you put that picture up again? It looks like from the picture that there's little or no parking for the industrial building. Where do the people in the industrial office building park?
As I mentioned earlier, the because there will be surface-level parking removed as a result of the residential component, the project does include a new four-story parking structure that would accommodate all of the industrial parking spaces.
Where is that? Is that shown in the picture?
I'll provide the site plan that demonstrates where the location-
I mean, it's not shown in that picture, I guess, is it?
No, that is correct, and that rendering is not shown there.
So is it approximate to the building, to the industrial office building?
Yes, that is correct.
Oh, are you showing the diagram? Oh, you're showing the building again. And so where do they park there for the building on the right, the people that work there?
They would be parking in the proposed parking structure that would be adjacent to that industrial office building to the southwest of that.
Do we see the roof of it to the extreme right?
Not in this rendering. I think I have another rendering here that would show you from the internal courtyard area between the residential buildings here to the south of that beyond that common open spaces where you would have that parking structure and to the left of this, beyond that rooftop terrace is where the existing industrial office building-
What I'm getting at is the internal circulation adequate? I mean, is you're going to have a lot of cars.
Mr. Contreras, perhaps you can put up the schematic of the of the property with the buildings shown.
Yes, show that schematic.
Go back one or two.
Well, here's the project site plan. As I mentioned earlier, you have two points of access that are existing off Lakeview Canyon Road. The internal access road, I think you can highlight this, the laser pointer, here is where you would have the internal access road bisecting the property. Here's that common open space area between the residential buildings and the parking structure in blue.
Oh, I see, that's where the parking structure is.
And you have the pedestrian path to travel that would connect the proposed parking structure to the existing industrial office building.
I see.
And the circulation plan was reviewed by not only Traffic Division staff, but also by Ventura County Fire Department for compliance.
Okay. And where would the people ingress and egress that will be living in the proposed structures? Would they use the farther northerly driveway?
Based on the proposed project, they would be using the existing access that's on the site right now, including that redesigned internal access road.
But I mean, which driveway would they use? You say there are two driveways there.
They are not restricted. They can use either driveway along Lakeview Canyon.
What would usage tell you, which they would probably use the more northerly driveway because it's proximate to the buildings, wouldn't you say?
Well, the subject site would provide for, you know, shared access, so it would be used by not only the residential component, but also for the industrial component of the project.
What I'm driving at is the people in those purple buildings probably wouldn't drive all the way down to the south of this diagram to go out on Lakeview Canyon. They would probably go out on that one or in the middle. Isn't that probably true?
Yeah, Councilmember Jones, the two driveways, there's the northerly driveway, as you pointed out, and southerly driveway, depends on which direction the people are coming from. If they're coming from the south from the freeway, they'd probably use the southerly driveway, and if they're coming from Thousand Oaks Boulevard, they use the northerly.
Well, I was thinking of people leaving the site. I think I have it pretty clear in my mind. Did you want any further questions now, Mayor, or wait till the public input?
If you have questions on the presentation, it'd be good. If you have something for our applicant-
Well, I didn't hear any mention of access to parks or schools. Was that part of your study at all for the new residents?
When we reviewed the project initially for the allocation, we did look at surrounding land uses, nearby land uses, including parks and schools, and what staff has verified are that there are two public elementary schools, West Hill Lake, Westlake Hills Elementary School that's one-point-two miles from the subject site, and White Oak Elementary, one-point-nine miles from the subject site. As far as parks go, there are four parks-
They wouldn't be able to go to White Oak, I believe that's in LA County.
That is correct.
So that wouldn't be in the same school district?
That is correct, but as far as just surrounding land uses and what's nearby, staff just did some research on what is nearby, and as far as parks go, there are four parks. We have Bernice Bennett Park, which is one mile away, Russell Park, one-point-two miles from the subject site. We do have Westlake Village Community Park, which is one-point-five miles from the subject property, and also Triumphal Park, which is two-point-four miles from the subject site. And looking at these surrounding land uses is one of the components that we looked at in the initial analysis of citing these proposed multifamily residential units on the subject property.
I guess there's no way of estimating the number of school-aged children that would be in a project like this. Is there any way of estimating that?
No, we don't have a way of estimating that. As part of the draft, the EIR process, we did look at land use and population, and the project would result in approximately eight hundred new residents for the site, but we don't know if that would include, what percentage would be for children or for adults.
Okay, I think that's good for now, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Bill Delapena?
Thank you, Mayor Engler. My question is about the the removal of the trees, oaks and sycamores. I believe they're mostly sycamores, which are landmark protected trees. What are the chances of transplanting transplanting some of those trees rather than planting them offsite?
Yes, staff did take that into consideration as far as the feasibility goes in the evaluation of the tree removals, and according to the project tree consultant and also the city's tree consultant, they concluded that the survival rate would be only fifty percent for these trees that are transplanted. They look at various components of the trees, the health, the appearance, the structure, and so based on that and also on the size of the trees, the box trees, can the site accommodate all ninety-one trees? It was concluded that replacement trees would be appropriate for forty-six of them to be onsite and forty-six to be offsite.
Has a location been identified for those replacement trees?
We haven't yet identified a location, but we do have project conditions that require, if the applicant does pay in-lu fee, we add that to the endowment fund, and we work with Public Works Department, Parks, or also COSCA to identify the property where we would have these trees located.
And what is the the biggest tree to be planted as part of the replacement formula?
We have-
Biggest size?
Yeah, the mitigation requires for two twenty-four-inch box trees and one thirty-six-inch box tree.
What was the first one?
Two twenty-four inch and one thirty-six inch.
So the thirty-six inch is the biggest tree, and what is the diameter of a tree, of a sycamore of that in that box?
It's about three inches in diameter for a thirty-six inch box tree.
Okay, how many years will it take for it to grow to its fullest height?
The sycamore grows faster than the oak tree. It takes some time to get to its height of the tree that's existing or being removed. Is that what you're asking?
How long it would take to grow to its fullest height, to become a grown tree, an adult tree?
Well, that really depends on a number of factors, but it'll take, you know, thirty, forty years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill Delapena. Other questions? I have just a couple of quick questions, and mine are also somewhat tree-related. There's a couple of very nice, I refer to them as heritage oak trees that are on that property as well. One large, I think it's a large valley oak, and another one is a large, I believe, coastal live oak. Are those oaks going to be preserved, or are they part of the oaks that are going to be removed?
Mayor, I believe you're referring to the oak trees on the southerly portion of the property in the grass lawn area between the freeway and the building?
No, they're in the parking lot area. One is in, both of them, one's more directly in front of the Baxter Building area, which I assume is going to be in good shape. There's one that is toward the northern aspect of the parking lot, though.
Based on the tree report that was provided for the project, there was no indication of any heritage oaks located on the subject site, and none of those would be removed. I can go back to the tree report and verify the size of the trees that are being removed because we do have two valley oaks and three coastal oaks that are going to be removed as far as the project, but again, based on the tree report and evaluation that we and assessment, there were no heritage oaks to be removed.
I saw that, I was just double-checking to make sure that there was those oaks that are, seem to be fairly old oaks and very large and nice specimens are going to be part of the landscape plan. Most of the trees that are going to be removed, are they are they naturally occurring, or are they trees that were planted at the time of development of the property?
There are various native trees on the drainage course area on the western portion of the property, but the parking lot landscaping did include various trees planted as a result of the Baxter Way industrial building, so most of the actual native trees would be along that drainage course on the western portion of the site.
So most of them in that riparian area toward the west?
Correct.
And will the project impinge upon that riparian area, or is it going to be fairly left alone, or is there going to be some work done over there as well?
Yeah, as far as the drainage course goes and those trees, there's only encroachments as a result of the project. There wouldn't be any removals. The removals are primarily for the location of the residential and parking structure buildings within the existing parking lot landscaped area.
Okay, and I have a quick question on, I understand that there was some Native American artifacts discovered at that location when it was when it was first built. The EIR talks quite a bit about how to remediate that. Just briefly tell me what the plans are for any discoveries there.
Yeah, as far as as part of the environmental impact report assessment, we did do an extended phase-one study on the subject property where we had various, I think it was thirteen or fifteen borings in the parking lot area to make sure that there aren't any conclusions identifying any sensitive cultural resources. The conclusions were negative. We did not find any significant cultural resource within those testing areas. And so beyond that, we did implement various mitigation measures of the project that include monitoring for construction on the subject property. If the project does get approved tonight and the applicant gets into post-approval, there would be requirements, various requirements for cultural resources to provide for the proper monitoring of the site.
Thank you, that's all my my questions. Any other questions, colleagues? Very good. I believe then we can go to our applicant, and we have a fairly extensive applicant team here available to respond to any questions. So what I'll do is I'll have the applicant, Mr. Dave Eady, do the original presentation. We do have fifteen minutes for your presentation, and you can divide it up however you would like it among your your staff.
Thank you, Mayor, Dave Eady. I am a resident of Newport Beach, and I'm the applicant, councilmembers. Nice to finally be here, it's taken a little while. We've gotten, let me start with just basically, we're going to have a short presentation tonight. Carlos, Carlos did a great job. Drew has put together a great staff to address this issue over the past eighteen, twenty months, and we've had a great dialogue of give and take and, you know, trying to make the project better. And I think that the iterative process we've had throughout this time has been, really speaks well for your staff on that. The one thing I would say with respect to outreach, just to start with, we've basically been doing this for two and a half years to massage this project, both publicly and privately, to try to come to a point where we have a project that is integrated and fits well with this site, because there is an existing developed building on the property, a very large one, as you know. And so I think the notion that we tried to explain to the planning commission was that this is really the right project at the right time and the right place. You know, it's a, just talking about generally the right time or the right project, I should say, it's a, we've got highly sustainable features in the project. Carlos talked on a couple of those things. Scott Baker's going to follow me, he's one of our team members and is going to give you a short PowerPoint that focuses on that pretty much. We have all electric, solar, EV-ready and capable charging stations and much, much more with respect to sustainability. With the seamless integration, I want to emphasize the fact that our site planning process from day one has been to avoid trees. This site has six hundred almost trees largely planted when the prudential building was built, but to try to integrate new structures within a parking lot where you have a ton of trees that were planted is a difficult task to do, and I think that our team has done a great job on that. And at the end of the day, you do have sixty-two more trees on the property or accounted for, granted, Councilmember Delapena, they're less sized, but they nevertheless are mitigation trees that follow your ordinances. So I think that that approach that we've taken has been the right one, and it kind of goes into the affordable housing, too. And the reason I say that is that not going for the density bonus, part of the reason we didn't do that has to do with trying to put the buildings in in a way that are sensitive to all of the other constraints. So basically, I think that that is tied into the whole picture of site planning. Design excellence, I think the staff report goes into that quite a bit, especially the planning commission staff report. We embraced parking, as you know, and didn't seek waivers of that. In fact, we have thirty-four extra parking spaces for the industrial office building at the end of the day on this, and all co-compliant on the apartments. Second, it's the right place. Let's talk about that for a minute. We're freeway close, as it was mentioned. That gives people the chance to get on the freeway quickly, and I think our project on balance is forty-one percent less VMT than the city average. So that, I think quoting the actual traffic report, what I liked at the end was that the, even using the level of service and analyzing intersections, the report said that there will be no noticeable increase in traffic at Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Lakeview Canyon. And yet, it's freeway distant. By that, I mean, we have the residential units that are separated by almost a thousand feet from the freeway, and you have a large office building in between. So from an air quality standpoint and a quality of life standpoint, that couldn't be a better location versus some units that have been proposed and approved that are very close to the freeway. The synergy of uses that we have, you know, that's been spoken about, and Scott will talk further about that, having proximity to work, retail transit, restaurants, trails, it's kind of a natural here. And what's also interesting is, first time in my life, I think I've seen an infill development of this magnitude, that you're not contending with existing residential communities, that you have to deal with disruptive issues that are evident in any project in an infill situation. in any project in an infill situation. Here, we have the closest residential community, HOA, approximately two-thirds of a mile away. And so it's, you don't have those kinds of adjacency issues to deal with. Also, the perimeter mature tree screening that we have along Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Lakeview Canyon, those are all mature trees. And if you drive along there now, yeah, you'll see threads of vision through there, but you're not going to see this project, because once again, it's scaled to not be seen. It's three stories. And that has to do, again, with the density and not going with a density bonus. And finally, it's surely the right time to do this project in terms of timing. You know, we have, I think, 3% or thereabouts vacancy rates in the city for housing, and we're coming along at a time when businesses are looking to have housing opportunities for their employees within town, so they don't have to go, come, go to Woodland Hills or go elsewhere to work, where they can actually live and work in the city. So I think this is why the Planning Commission, there were only four that night, but they unanimously approved the project, recommended approval to you. And I think they felt that that, given, and they talked about the fact that it comports with your general plan update for 2045, and all of those elements that were vetted over the past year and a half, we've tried to address each and every one of those things and come to you with a project that you can be proud of. So before Scott gets up, I just want to ask one more, or tell you one more thing about the unions and their letters. They came in rather late, and they're rather voluminous. And quite frankly, we were a little surprised at that, because over 50% of our contracted construction projects, Kennedy Wilson's in 2021 globally, use union labor. I think that's to the tune of a half a billion this year, or last year, at 2021, that was utilized for union projects. And, you know, there are so many components that go into bidding, negotiating, and contracting the construction work. We look at costs, safety records, timing to complete, availability of labor, contractors, subcontractors, distance to the project, their references, and many more things. So while we don't believe in limiting qualified contractors based on union or non-union, I think suffice it to say we're very union-friendly. And so it's, getting that out there is something that I think important to say, because it's not by any means a situation where, you know, we're just anti-union for whatever reason, because of costs or what have you. So we're getting, I'm six minutes into it almost, so I'll let Scott talk, and then when he's through, I'll be able to stand here and answer questions, or we can elaborate, our team can elaborate on any features or subjects you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eadie.
I'll try to do this as gracefully as possible without making a spectacle.
You're doing very well.
Good evening. Scott Baker with Realm Landscape Architects Urban Designs. Magic. Okay. So I want to be very brief. I don't want to repeat anything that Mr. Contreras has said or Mr. Eadie, but I did. I will filibuster until it's fixed. There we go. Thank you. There we go. I did just want to underscore a few key things that I think begins to summarize some of what we've been talking about. One, the idea of a set of guiding principles, which the design team, the project team, really worked from, some of which you've heard a bit about already. But one, this idea of integrating seamlessly into the city fabric. It needs to belong here in Thousand Oaks. It needs to fit within the vernacular of the city, and it needs to be responsible to the city. And so we felt very strongly about that. The idea of synergy of uses, putting housing where you have retail, where you have shops, in proximity to open space, really important. It goes directly to this question of reducing trip counts and the like, and a higher quality of life. So the idea of taking a surface parking lot and turning it into housing, I think, is an important piece. The city has a robust bus system, and Mr. Contreras pointed out the bus stops that are nearby, a growing bike infrastructure as well. We wanted to leverage those and really lean on that to, again, reduce car trips and overall car dependence. The idea of preserving and enhancing the native landscape, this is a special place from a landscape ecology and from a habitat point of view. And so we wanted to ensure that with bringing housing and bringing open space, that it wanted to be respectful of that and wanted to, in fact, grow that aspect. Certainly, we're interested in helping to support the growing biotech community as well, and again, putting jobs and housing together on one site. We're all very familiar with housing shortages, and beginning to sort of look at where the workforce is and how do we support that was really key to the project. And then, as Mr. Eadie said, this idea of delivering with design excellence, really relying on best practices to deliver the best possible project that we could. I won't repeat everything about the site plan. Mr. Contreras did a great job. Couple of key things. Again, locating these buildings on an existing parking lot, translating asphalt into homes is key. Maintaining the landscape buffer around the periphery of the site, so that, as Mr. Eadie said, maintaining that buffer, maintaining that landscape edge along Lakeview Canyon, really important to the quality of the project. I did want to touch on the riparian corridor. We are not, the curb line is not changing at all. If anything, it's pulling back away from the riparian corridor a little bit. So we're not encroaching any further, and so those trees and the landscape that was being talked about earlier remains intact through that riparian corridor. There is the bridge, of course, and that pedestrian access remains very important to us. So from our side, making a connection to that. And then the last thing, too, was just the careful placement of the buildings to really consolidate the footprint, grow the amount of open space on this site. And in fact, what we are achieving is a site that is more permeable tomorrow than it is today. And that's very important to us. And that open space and how we approach stormwater becomes very important as well. Currently, that entire surface lot ends up in that riparian corridor. We will capture all of that stormwater, all that runoff. It'll be cleansed through landscape bio remediation before it is eventually discharged. So again, we are not only making it more permeable, but we're actually cleaning the water before it goes back into the corridor. The subject of trees, we've talked a bit about that already tonight. We're keeping a very small footprint, as I said. The trees that are being removed sit within the building footprints. They sit within the existing surface parking lot. Those are trees that were planted as part of the building project in the 1980s. As we mentioned, there's five, excuse me, five oaks and 26 sycamores, for a total of 31 trees, requiring replacement of 93. What we have done is located 47 of those on-site. From a horticultural point of view, we want to be responsible and make sure that those trees have the space they need to grow. And that leaves 46 that would be placed elsewhere in the city, whether it's the in Luffy or whatever mechanism is ultimately decided. We can't accommodate all of those trees on our site, but we feel that they, it should be something that the rest of the city should also benefit from. So that's certainly something we're committed to. And I think important to note that when we look at those replacement trees that are being put on-site, plus the additional trees and large shrubs that are being put on-site as well, that the timeframe in order to match the canopy that's being lost with those 31 removals is in the range of 15 years to match that canopy size. So it's not 30 or 40, but actually a much more consolidated period of time. We're very focused on getting back there as quickly as we can. And then finally, I've got a minute left, which is unregrettable, but I want to talk about sustainability. As was touched on before, the residential buildings, 6% will be EV-ready on day one, with an additional 4% being capable for future EV. And in the industrial garage, 3% will be ready on day one, with an additional 3% sleeved for future incorporation. Solar, we anticipate meeting 40% of the demand through solar on top of the residential. And of course, the suite of windows and operable windows, low-E windows, no fossil fuels being used in the units as well. We're very interested in sort of lowering our energy footprint as much as possible. And then the last piece I'll touch on is water, something that is increasingly, increasingly important. We know that multifamily homes use, on average, about a third less water than single-family homes per person. We know this is a best practice. So in addition to using low-water fixtures in baths, in terms of toilets, faucets, my time is up, I didn't time it as well this week. Couple of final thoughts.
Colleagues, would you like to extend his time a little bit?
Third second.
Yes, go ahead. Let's extend the time a few more minutes.
Apologize, I get wordy. In addition to the built fixtures, the idea of a native and drought-tolerant landscape. Again, I've grown the landscape, as we've talked about, but the idea of using a native landscape that'll use very, very low water amounts, and coupling that with smart irrigation, as I mentioned, the stormwater strategies as well. So kind of in summary, and we've certainly come back to questions afterwards, this is a project that's been informed by stakeholder comment and engagement through the process, where we listen to folks to try to find out what mattered, and we think we've captured all of that. It addresses 44 affordable housing units and delivers much-needed housing in the city, where it is consolidated with both retail and work and jobs, expanding habitat and permeability, and increasing biodiversity as a strategy for resilience for the city going forward, and encouraging walking and biking and healthy living and less dependency on the car. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for my colleagues here? Let's start off down at the other end there, Mr. McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. Wonderful presentation. Thank you also, staff. Appreciate it. Mr. Contreras. Mr. Eadie or Baker, this question is, have you looked at gray water capture and reuse for some of the irrigation? For example, Australia has that as part of their Newhelm development programs. It's done very well for them, taking the gray water, doing preliminary treatment on-site, and using it for landscaping. Is that feasible in this particular development?
Actually, we looked at that, Councilman, and it's, I think, involves double piping, and it involves placing cisterns underneath the buildings, which are, of course, have a one-story underground parking garage under that. You know, so from our viewpoint, we looked at that and appreciate the comment, because it is kind of a coming wave, perhaps, but in terms of just feasibility for this site, we felt that it just didn't, wasn't that possible, given the fact that we're trying to minimize our footprint everywhere we go on this site.
Thank you. Second question. Westlake Hills is right around the corner from there. Residents there have concerns regarding traffic, and the, usually between 7:30 to about 8:15, there's some 2,000 cars that go into the high school there, and then after school, they're leaving. What does the traffic flow look like for the residents to not impact that current issue going on with the high school?
My recollection of the, in reading the traffic report, is such that the movements of the residents are at different times than the high school deliveries of people, of students. And also, those people that are going to work from the apartments are largely going to go down to the freeway to the right, off of Lakeview Canyon Road, for instance. The traffic report, and Ms. Noma may correct me, but I think it speaks to 70 maximum cars that come out of our project at peak hour in the morning over to Lakeview Canyon Road over a period of two hours. So that's why I mentioned earlier in my presentation that the traffic report said that the impact will not be noticeable. That's the word they used.
Thus, because the apartment residents will be exiting to the right, going towards Towns Gate or the street that's there to get on the freeway as compared to going over to Thousand Oaks Boulevard?
Yes, most of them will.
Thank you for the consideration. Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Bill Delapena?
Thank you. I wanted to say thank you to Scott for clarifying about the tree canopy and that your plan is to give the trees enough water so they can be representing what is there today in 15 years, not necessarily 30 or 40 years. The question I have is, of course, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the question for you to confirm what the learning center will be like.
It's, as Carlos described, it's a place for our resident kids to utilize that site for learning and studying.
And it will be an exclusive use to the children there, not necessarily outside?
That's correct.
Okay. My other question is, I do think it makes sense to keep the gate closed between the promenade and your property. We do want to encourage pedestrian access and walkability, so it actually makes sense to do that. The, in your list of outreach, did you reach out to organizations, nonprofits, such as Thrive or We Belong, that are advocating for units for people with developmental disabilities?
I don't believe we did directly, no, Councilwoman. I think that most of our outreach was with the four closest HOAs and with the business community that is within fairly close proximity to us, just basically from the standpoint of notifying them of the potential that they may have opportunities here for their employees to have housing and to share the project with them. But we did not reach out, I don't believe, to any of those two organizations, one or two that you mentioned.
I think this is probably something that we might want to consider for future projects, that I commend you on bringing in the Conejo Climate Coalition, but to also, for future development projects not involving you, we'll be reaching out to the other organizations as well. Thank you for offering very low-income units. Will you be giving, how would you be taking a waitlist, so to speak? Will it be based on income? Because I want to make sure that we're not leaving out people with developmental disabilities either. So any idea how you would do that?
Well, as a preface, just to restate, the 34 units that we're offering is not in exchange for a density bonus. So I think it stands as a very clear public benefit. That said, the method in which the manner in which the thing is administered is referenced in the development agreement. There is a protocol that is, the developer has to follow, and there's monitoring by the staff to effectuate a fair process. I don't know all the specifics, but I remember reading in the development agreement that those safeguards are in place.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill Delapena. Other questions? Just a real, real quick one for me, and I appreciate the questions about the low and very low income, and I appreciate you offering that to the city. That's a very, very good community benefit.
Thank you.
The, some of the other developers have come to us with thoughts that it would be a LEED or a, you know, California Green Standard and that sort of thing. Where do you think this project will fall?
I think we're going to be equal to or exceeding LEED requirements, because we have a similar system. It's called FITWELL. And FITWELL, we feel, is a better measure of, a metrics to do sustainability features for the project in a residential setting than LEED, which crosses the board to commercial, industrial, and so forth. And I think that basically the point system that, there's a minimum, there's 53 different points in FITWELL that you have to meet, and I think we far exceed all of those with this project. I think there is some language in the EIR on that, and perhaps one of our consultants can elaborate if you, beyond what I've just said, but I think that it's robust.
So thank you. I appreciate that goal. And just one other quick question on the landscaping. We've been asking everybody to reduce their watering to non-functional turf. Do you have plans for turf on this property?
There is one area that's been proposed as turf. It is in the larger sort of aggregated open space that sits between the garage and the residential. The idea being is that this becomes a community space, a flexible space. You know, ideally, understanding all the concerns around turf, but recognizing it as one, a material that keeps the heat island down, but is also very flexible for gathering and community events. So we saw the need to create a space for this community, an outdoor space for those types of events and activities. So that's what's been proposed at this point in time to accommodate that. It's modest in scale, but felt that it was important as a complement to the other hardscape areas.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I just ask a follow-up to your-
Mr. Mayor, could I just ask a follow-up to your last?
Mr. Jones, go ahead.
All the lawn you have there between the existing building and the freeway, are you planning to change that to water-tolerant plants?
That's an excellent question, Councilman Jones.
I didn't want to get, you know, praised for my question. I'd just like an answer.
That area consists of approximately 16 acres of lawn, and I think that that discussion needs to take place among ourselves, including the city, because it's an iconic window to the city, if you will. It's something that we represent to tenants on what their amenities will be, and yet we're mindful, of course, to the drain on resources, especially right now, and we're giving this some serious thought. It's, we've gone so far as to look at, you know, just basically what would happen to the site, that area, should we just replace it? And it probably begs to have a grass that's low impact on water, a more riparian look to it. That involves, and Scott's standing right here, so I'll let him get into it a little bit more, but basically, it involves a process where you have to come up with a plan and a budget and a program to transition to that. And I think that we would, we as a company, would want, not knowing what it's going to look like, we'd want to start with kind of a pilot program to maybe take a look at how it's going to look before we take out 16 acres. But to your point, we are looking at that, and it's on our radar, because it's just a big issue with everybody right now.
You don't have to convince us. You have to convince Metropolitan Water District, because they're not going to allow you to keep ornamental grass. I mean, they're, right now, I don't know if you're aware of this, and I'm not trying to be critical at all, but we can water only one day a week right now, even numbers on Saturday or something, and odd numbers on Sunday or vice versa. And if you get that requirement, which I don't know how you would avoid, there's no way you're, that lawn is going to turn brown.
Well, it's turning yellow right now, so it's getting, it's on its way, you know, so it's a concern, and rest assured, we're looking at it.
Well, as I say, you'll have to talk to Metropolitan Water, not us.
Is, just a quick follow-up on Mr. Jones's, is that lawn area out adjacent to the freeway, is that connected to this project or all those are with the existing building?
No, it is not. It is not. You know, and there's complications to look at, because the sprinkler system also waters the trees, you know, so you just, turning off the sprinkler system and letting it go brown has some big implications on the trees, too, and there's a lot of them there.
So if I might, just on this topic, and Mr. Edie knows that he's part of the Cal Water Service area over there, but between this process, all of the teams are, on the drought task force are working with large tenants. This is one of those. And certainly, the engagement with the city would be warranted and will occur, because this would be a significant change to the overall landscape master plan of the project site, but also, as Mr. Edie mentioned, the gateway into the city. And so it's certainly something that's already been discussed internally. As Mr. Edie alluded to, it's something that we'll be talking more about. While it's not in conjunction with this project directly, it's something that's going to have to be addressed. As, you know, just as a reminder, I use this number often, but that two-thirds of an acre out front that we have stopped watering was 2 million gallons a year that was going on that. So, you know, there's all these areas, these are opportunities for conservation and chances for us to do that and look at, but we want to make sure it's beautiful for the next generation, and so we'll do that in conjunction with the property owner.
A loaded.
Very good. Any other questions? We do have some public speakers, so thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We have some on Zoom and some in person, so I will split it up, so people can, if you're here to speak, to be able to speak a little bit quicker. First off, though, we have somebody on Zoom, Kinsey Flame. Ms. Flame.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. We can hear you. Go ahead.
What was that name again? Kinsey?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and community members. Thank you so much for taking the time to hear public input during this evening's meeting. I believe it was 2018 or 2019 first began hearing about the general plan. With 2020 in the middle, I can't remember which one it was. I encourage those community members who have heard, have questions, and the ones I hear all the time say, "I had no idea this was going on," or are not aware of the general plan, I encourage you to get involved. I encourage you to do your research, to pay attention, watch council meetings live or even later on YouTube. The city has made the information easily accessible to everyone, and it's our job to be engaged, informed citizens. As I said before, MOCV has multiple post requests for rentals and homes for sale. There simply isn't enough available, and our community is in desperate need of housing. With our biotech industry continuously growing, less and less becoming a teaching hospital, we'll have young professionals moving into the area that simply don't want all that comes with owning a home. It's quite a bit of work. The project will offer these young professionals a home in our community with less upkeep and more of a community feel. To repurpose this asphalt site with housing along with drought tolerant native landscaping is a win-win for our community. I hope the city approves the project as the Gateway at Thousand Oaks. It sounds great. Thanks for listening. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Flame. Next up online, we have Andrew Garl. Mr. Garl.
Good evening, council members and staff, and to the applicant team. I'm reaching out to speak in support of this project tonight as a resident and a local architect. I'd like to compliment the design and the staff report and the development of specific Plan 23, which highlights the city's flexibility in working with applicants to provide the opportunity for the developments like this and others that we've seen in the city recently. A couple of points, as a proponent of the project and architect, look for projects that have the highest and best use of our land, which is limited supply. That would include turning parking lots into housing, as the applicant team had indicated this project will do. In addition, I feel like this project, on a personal level, highlights a change in the city, the direction of the planning for the future along the lines of the general plan, which will create a more livable city, just in the fact that we're going to house our residents and our future citizens near the places where they want to work. So I'm encouraged by the reuse, or call it suburban repurposing, of this parking lot for housing and the affordable housing component, and in addition, encouraged by a number of projects, including this one, reusing sort of the leftover space of the city, commercial properties, and something I'm studying on a professional level and appreciate on a personal level. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garl. Next up, we have Clint Foltz online.
Hello, my name is Clint Foltz. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks and a member of the Canoe Climate Coalition. We are extremely pleased that the project at One Baxter Way includes plans to build all-electric residential units and is eliminating so-called natural gas from their development. Natural gas is, in actuality, a toxic fuel, with the predominant component being methane, an extremely potent greenhouse gas. Methane has a global heating potential more than 80 times greater than that of carbon dioxide during the first 20 years after it is released into the atmosphere. Leading scientists tell us we must electrify everything in the coming years, and we applaud the developer for choosing electric over dangerous gas-burning appliances. The Canoe Climate Coalition also commends the developers on additional climate and environmentally-conscious features that include solar power systems, water conservation measures, native and drought tolerant landscaping, and EV charging stations and infrastructure. We are pleased to see that the buildings will include solar panels that will generate 40% of the load, exceeding CalGreen energy requirements. The development's CalGreen and FITWELL compliance is highly commendable and appreciated. Although we would have liked to see an increase in the number of affordable units, we commend the project for incorporating the aforementioned features, as well as the inclusion of 34 residential units for low-income and moderate-income households. The proximity of grocery stores and a variety of services nearby, including Metro bus stops, will help those without cars get basic necessities. Often, green building design features and affordable units are presented by developers as trade-offs, so it is refreshing to see a project that includes both. Thousand Oaks has an affordable housing crisis, and we're in the support of the city's efforts to help alleviate that problem while keeping the climate crisis in mind. We believe One Baxter Way has designed a more sustainable project than any currently existing in Thousand Oaks, and we look forward to seeing all developers building here adopt these and additional climate smart features. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One more person online, we'll take Daniel Borja online.
Good evening, Mayor Angler and council members. Danielle Borja, President/CEO of the Greater Canoe Valley Chamber and Thousand Oaks resident, speaking tonight from Cottage Grove, Oregon, and hoping my internet holds up. On behalf of our Board of Directors, I am speaking tonight in support of the proposed project at One Baxter Way by Kennedy Wilson. Our local employers are desperate for more housing, especially options that appeal to young professionals. Last week, the Ventura County Star published an editorial entitled "What Thousand Oaks Learned From Kmart," referencing the T.O. Ranch project as a story of its resurrection and the plans for what's to come, offering a constructive and encouraging lesson for how Ventura County can adopt to changing times, growth, and prosper without surrendering the desire of its residents to preserve open space and retain the quality of life that truly sets this county apart. We believe Gateway at the Oaks falls into this very same category, a proposal that will transform this site, replacing an expansive paved parking lot with modern, sustainable housing, complemented with native plants and drought tolerant landscaping for this infill project. This site is perfectly situated to promote walkability for both work and play, resulting in an average vehicle mile travel that is lower 40% than the average resident in Thousand Oaks, which I know has been talked about tonight, but I think bears repeating. The unique building shapes of this design specifically preserve as many trees as possible, and the impacted trees are a very small fraction of those on-site, most of which were planted when the property was originally developed. 264 units, no density bonus, green initiatives, minimal visual impact, 34 affordable units, meaningful housing for our community. The VC Star editorial went on to say that local elected officials and city planners across the county should look for opportunities where mixed-use projects similar to T.O. Ranch could be accommodated. This is one of those opportunities. Please continue this smart approach to housing and approve Gateway at the Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Borja. We'll switch to people in-house right now, so let's hear from our first in-house speaker, Suzanne Schmitz.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Schmitz, and I'm from Thousand Oaks. Thank you to the mayor and the Thousand Oaks City Council for serving us in this beautiful Canoe Valley. You have a tough job, and you deserve admiration and respect for keeping our city clean, safe, and beautiful. I've lived in Thousand Oaks 59 years, maybe more than some of you here. I want to talk about one thing today. Are oak trees protected in Thousand Oaks? Many residents think they are. They don't come to these council meetings, they don't see the requests. This is a very subjective question. Unfortunately, I've seen the protection of oak trees decline over the decades. Please take a drive to Hodencamp in Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Have you ever seen the majestic oak tree that was allowed to survive, and our city planners built the road around it? I was there when they built that road. That is the legacy of your predecessors. Let's go back eight years ago, when we were shocked to see century-old oaks that were removed from the shopping mall on Westlake Boulevard and Townsgate. I was there. How could this happen in Thousand Oaks? The hired arborists are very good at saying that they needed to be removed. Oak trees have no voice. These centurions have survived decades of drought, floods, fires, and even disease, I'm sorry, arborists, and yet they cannot survive the modern-day developers. The Baxter project behind the Westlake Promenade is now requesting permission from our Planning Commission to remove protected oaks with replacement trees. There is an oxymoron we have here. We've collected billions of dollars to protect our mountain lions with a wildlife bridge, and yet we've forgotten our protected oaks. As a business professional for over 40 years, I am not against development. I support responsible developments, like Lake Sherwood, who hired private companies like Valley Crest Tree Company, who boxed, replanted, built streets and houses around the oaks to save the trees. We have responsible planned development, but we must save our oaks. I'm asking you today to prevent the removal of the five protected oaks and reduce the Baxter project. I think you should require all developers to pay for the relocation of oaks within a development or move them to local parks, like the new one on Page Lane. Protected means protected. The families and residents of Thousand Oaks deserve better than this. Please continue to uphold the oak tree protection status and never forget what your predecessors fought for. After all, this is literally the name of our city, not Newport Beach, not Beverly Hills, but Thousand Oaks. Lastly, this morning, can I ask one more? Lastly, this morning, I went to an elementary school camp, and I asked the kids what they wanted to do about the oak trees. And, I don't know if you can show this on there.
TOTV, can you show?
They, I asked, I can't see it. I don't know how. There we go. Okay. So at the summer camp, I came as a speaker, and I asked the children what they thought about our oak trees. Here are the drawings that I want to give you, 42 drawings. The last thing they asked me as I was leaving was, "Can you let us know if they did the right thing?" This is the right time. It is the right time, but it's the right time to do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up in-house, Tim McDougall.
How's everyone doing? Good evening, Mayor Angler, council members, and staff. My name is Tim McDougall. I'm a 22-year resident of Newberry Park. Tonight, I'm speaking as a private citizen to encourage you to approve the housing opportunity before you this evening. After reviewing the Planning Commission report and the meeting, it appears this project meets the need for more housing and achieves the vision to utilize this land for its highest and best purpose. A couple of things that were mentioned tonight is that it's consistent, it's compatible, and it's not detrimental. Thank you all very much for your service, and I hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. Next up in-house, Sean Maradian.
Good evening, Mayor Angler, Honorable City Council. My name is Sean Maradian. I'm a lifelong resident of Thousand Oaks. Here, just to reiterate my comments from the IMT project, which is one of gratitude and acknowledgement for the applicant, our city staff, and all of you for making projects like this possible. The community at large doesn't understand the persistence, the patience, and the sheer amount of time it takes to bring a project like this forward, or like IMT. This project, I believe, has been in the concept phase for nearly eight years before it got to this point. IMT was 18 years. I mean, these are generations that go by that are missing out on these opportunities. You know, I made a quote to someone about these projects as we applauded IMT, and we said, "Wow, maybe in three, four, five years, we're going to see these homes come online." But the projects we're approving today, that are going to be built tomorrow, are servicing a need that existed in the past. We needed these units long ago, and we still need these units today. But I leave you with some optimism and gratitude in my closing remarks in support of this project and all the great work that our community is doing and witnessing the support from the broader range of the community, and that is that tonight we can celebrate what it looks like and feels like when everyone wins. I hope you can use this project and IMT for everything else we do as a community, knowing that we work together, we achieve far greater success. that when we work together, we achieve far greater success than we do apart. So grateful to everyone that made tonight possible. I thank Kennedy Wilson and their team, and I wish them success, and I ask that you support their project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maradian. Our next in-house speaker is Trent Sigard. And then we'll go back to our online folks.
What was the last name? Okay, I got it. Hello, council, city staff, and those watching at home. My name's Trent Sigard, and I'm a current resident of Newberry Park. I'm here to support Resolution Eight A for construction of the apartments at One Baxter Way. The location is close to schools, multiple shopping centers, and will increase housing availability, which we've heard is a huge topic. The permanent bike storage, I'm a bike guy, as you guys can probably tell behind me, is amazing. The e-bike charging in this area is also super important because e-bikes are heavy, and they're hard to get up into your apartment to charge. So that room is incredibly helpful for changing how we get around our city. The site also puts a good focus on walkability and bikeability, and that seems to be a top priority of people who wish to invest in our community and maybe one day raise a family here. Our neighborhoods, starting with First Neighborhood in Westlake Village, were built around the concept of having a village center with services and markets within walking distance of every home. And I believe this project continues that vision further. I also want to comment that residents of this development aren't just going to be out-of-towners moving here for a new job. They will be those of us who already live in this community and who desire that walkable, bikeable lifestyle. These people, we are here, we're already invested in the community, creating our local culture, and want to see things in our community continue to progress over the next few years. Just want to say thanks for getting us to this point, and I urge you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's go back to our online folks. So we have Jackson Piper. Mr. Piper, you're up.
Good evening. Thank you to the members of the city council, public that are present for this, and to the, um, all the people involved in the project. My name is Jackson Piper. I live in unincorporated Newberry Park, and I'm here to support this project because I think it is going to provide, um, some very good benefits to this city. First off, I will say I think it's an excellent location. It is, um, reusing a area that's currently just a field of parking and allowing residences to be built on that site. I do wish that there was more affordable housing included, however, I think the benefit of having, um, two-hundred-and-sixty-four units of housing on that site within easy walking distance of the, the Promenade Mall, which will contain a market, contain a movie theater, contain shops, restaurants. It will be valuable to the residents there because then they can just easily walk next door to fulfill a lot of their needs instead of having to drive somewhere. It's also sharing the same site as the large industrial building that was known as the Baxter Building, and hopefully, a lot of the people that are employed in businesses in that building will be able to live on the site as well and be able to simply walk to work instead of having to drive. I think that while this project is not perfect, no project is going to be perfect, this provides a huge amount of benefits to the community. I appreciate all of the climate measures that they've taken. I appreciate that they're going to try and retain water on-site and, um, filter it and put it in the ground. And I think that the benefits of something like this far outweigh any perceived or real consequences of allowing it to go forward. So please support this project, and please, uh, please continue to push for Thousand Oaks to have more developments that include affordable housing, climate measures, um, and more, more use of transit, walking, and biking instead of just single occupancy vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. Next up online, we have Anthony Ventura. Mr. Ventura. Mr. Ventura, I think you are muted right now. Why don't we go on to our next speaker, Mr. Alex Perez, and we'll try to come back to Mr. Ventura. Mr. Perez.
Hello, how's everybody doing today?
Very good, thank you, sir. We can hear you well.
Thank you. Um, so my name is Alex Perez. I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I've been a union carpenter for, since two thousand and one, and although I appreciate the comment about union or non-union, this isn't really about union or non-union. Um, I'll, I'll just say, as a union carpenter, I've been able to purchase a home in the Newberry Park, Oak Ridge Estates area. What it has provided me was a good-paying job with benefits and the means to support my family very well. So with these projects that the council, city council is approving in the future here, and especially this one, it is very important that we, uh, put in the, you know, contract or paperwork that it is required to use skilled and trained workforce and local hire. A lot of the construction that goes on around here, the, the construction workers that are non-union get paid twenty bucks an hour with no, you, no, uh, uh, benefits or insurance for their kids' teeth or anything like that. So, uh, like the gentleman said, they do work with union contractors or develop, or companies. It's important that we allow our community members to have a good, paying job where they can still afford to live in these newly-built developments and, um, live in the community and purchase these homes or rent these homes and continue to contribute to the local economy, not only by purchasing or renting, but by continually living here and, uh, doing our part to keep Thousand Oaks beautiful and livable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up online, we, next up online, we have Manley McNich.
Hello, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for your time tonight. My name's Manley McNich. I'm a representative with Southwest Carpenters Union, and I'm also a local representative serving and working in the Thousand Oaks area. And some, some of the, um, concerns we have have been, it sounds like they're being addressed with, by the developer, because when they work with the unions, they're satisfying a lot of the, what we're asking for is in the skilled and trained local hire, because that's what a, a union worker would be in that area. But we also need to pay attention to, um, one of the very first parts of the discussion I was hearing, that there, it, there was two schools that were called out to service the area, but only one of them can actually be used. Is there plans to build any new schools in that area? Were, were studies done on that? Because we don't have a place for the kids to go to school. It's going to put an overburden on the school system, and that gets into the environmental impacts. And, um, like my, uh, fellow union carpenters stated a minute ago, um, as far as the developers go, my hat's off to them if that's, they're going to in fact, uh, use union work, workers on these projects, and if they would like to talk, my phone number is eight zero five two two zero 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 one four. And like I say, I'm a local rep for the area, so I'd be glad to work with them and help them get contractors that'll give them the best price for their money. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, sir. I believe we do have Anthony Ventura back online here, so let's see if we can get him this time. I think you're still on mute there, Mr. Ventura. We're having, we're having trouble hearing you, sir. Let's, let's do this. We'll try Mr. Ventura here again in a couple more minutes. I got a couple of people in-house, and we'll come right back to you, sir. Next up in-house here, we have Hala Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Engler, council members and city staff. My name is Hala Maher, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I would like to briefly address and point out some items in regard to the newly-proposed developments going on in Thousand Oaks, specifically Kennedy Wilson and IMT. I think we're all aware, housing is and has become a great need here, so the new apartment buildings that have been proposed by builder Kennedy Wilson is an exciting development, and I'm looking forward to seeking this take, to seeing this take place. Additionally, I have learned that this development will include a tutoring center within its plans. I think this is a brilliant and extremely helpful resource. The tutoring center will help families who might need the extra help. Parents are so busy these days, and having this right in their own community is invaluable. I hope there are no sequoia environmental complaints that will delay this project, which will increase the cost of housing. I hope both IMT and Kennedy Wilson projects get underway with great results, and I look forward to it. The tutoring center will be a complimentary service for those living in the apartments, which make this new development highly desirable and very inspiring. So with that, I would like to acknowledge Councilman Kevin McNamee for putting this idea out there in the first place. So thank you, Councilman. We appreciate it. Also, a thank you to Kennedy Wilson for implementing the tutoring center into the plans and meeting our local needs. One more project that I would like to acknowledge is IMT development that will also be adding a tutoring center for their plans and will provide the resource to their residents. I cannot emphasize what a great addition this will be to the building itself and the residents who will be living there. Thank you again for all your efforts and what you are doing for your, for our youth. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Haverstock, your turn. And then next in-house is Amelia Fuentes.
Thank you, Mayor Engler and council members. My name is Adam Haverstock, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Canejo Valley Chamber of Commerce. I am here to speak in support of the Gateway at the Oaks project. This project was endorsed by the Board of Directors of the Chamber, and we have submitted a letter of support in your written packet. In addition, we submitted more than a dozen letters of support from major employers in Thousand Oaks. Businesses submitting letters of support include Amgen, Takeda, Atara Biotherapeutics, Capcida Biotherapeutics, Westlake Village BioPartners, Fuji Film, Los Robles Health System, Mesa Rich, who operates the Oaks Mall, Premier America Credit Union, Hyatt Regency Westlake, Bioscience Alliance, and Newmark Merrill, operator of the Janz Marketplace, among others. As you can see from this list, employers representing thousands of employees have voiced their support for this proposal. This is because, at a macro level, Thousand Oaks needs to build more housing. I think everyone in this room knows that Thousand Oaks in California have a housing crisis. Additionally, we're specifically supporting the Gateway at the Oaks project because Kennedy Wilson made extensive efforts to make this a project that our community supports. They are proposing all-electric buildings, building a parking structure to accommodate the parking requirements, and plumbing for and adding EV charging stations. But I ask you not to take our word for it. Here are a few comments from major Thousand Oaks employers in their own words. From Amgen, "A vital factor in deciding where to locate offices is the availability of a wide variety of housing, entertainment, and recreation options for our employees." Atara Biotherapeutics, "The city cannot prioritize the growth of the biotech sector without addressing the significant housing shortage for our local workforce. An infill project on a site that has historically been used exclusively for office are the kinds of creative solutions we need to provide more local housing options." Capcida Biotherapeutics, "Many of our employees are seeking housing with walkability to dining and retail combined with onsite amenities. Very hard to find in Thousand Oaks." Takeda Pharmaceutical, "Many of the employees we recruit are coming from or have competing employment opportunities in major markets. Those cities have modern housing options that are walkable to local businesses with onsite amenities, something that is very hard to find in Thousand Oaks." And finally, Los Robles Health System, "The thoughtful design, numerous green initiatives, and inclusive thirty-four affordable housing units in the mix of the overall two-hundred-and-sixty-four proposed apartments is exactly what our community needs to bridge the way to lasting residency and a platform for housing upward mobility. Please vote yes and approve the Gateway at the Oaks project." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next in-house is Amalia Fuente, um, Fuentes.
Um, hi, good evening. I'm actually not in-house. Should I still go ahead and give my comment?
Yes, I'm sorry, I, I thought you were in-house. Please go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, my name is Amalia Bolifuentes. I'm an attorney with Lozo Drury LLP, and I'm here on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility or SAFER. Our review of the environmental impact report for this project resulted in us concluding that a revised EIR is necessary in order to adequately analyze the project's potential environmental impacts and to impose all feasible mitigation measures. This is primarily based on two main issue areas, which are biological resources and air quality. Expert wildlife ecologist Dr. Sean Smallwood reviewed the EIR's biological resources analysis and concluded that the survey conducted for wildlife on-site was inadequate to form a complete baseline. Additionally, expert biologist Noriko Smallwood visited the site and identified twenty-two species of vertebrate wildlife, five of which were special status species. Dr. Smallwood also identified several other potential impacts which were not addressed in the EIR, including impacts on breeding capacity, wildlife movement, traffic mortality, bird window collision mortality, deaths, and toxins from the introduction, introduction of house cats and cumulative impacts. He recommended several mitigation measures which could help remedy these impacts and which the city should consider in a revised EIR. Next, environmental consulting group Soil Water Air Protection Enterprise, or SWAP, found that there was substantial evidence of a potential health risk impact from the project's diesel particulate emissions and recommended that a health risk assessment be prepared to assess these emissions. SWAP also found that the EIR's greenhouse gas emissions assessment failed to consider performance-based standards under the California Air Resources Board Scoping Plan and the Southern California Association of Governments Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy. SWAP recommended that the greenhouse gas analysis be updated to correct these errors and mitigate any potential impacts. For these reasons, we request that the council reject the EIR and direct staff to prepare a revised EIR, addressing these impacts and proposing adequate mitigation measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuentes, uh, Fuente, Fuentes. We are still going to try to get Mr. Ventura on board here. Mr. Ventura, are you able to join us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Anthony Ventura. I'm also a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters Local Eight Oh Five. I live in the local area and work in the vicinity of this project. Uh, I am a resident of Ventura, and I have been a resident of Ventura County for about twenty-eight years. I'm also a representative of Local Eight Oh Five with close to two thousand members that live also in the vicinity. We believe that the city should require a project to be built utilizing a local and skilled and trained workforce. Having a local hire of skilled and trained requirements reduces construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy. They do this by having local residents that would work on this project that would reinvest right back into the community by shopping locally, and the revenue made from the projects like this gets put right back into the local economy by tax revenue. Other cities have not hesitated to apply skilled and trained workforce requirements for private developments and projects in their city. Personally, myself, I've worked out at, at Amgen for about ten years out of my thirty-plus years that I have in, in the trade. It's time that we take care of our local residents by giving them the opportunity to work close to home so they can be able to go to that soccer or Little League baseball game. so they can be able to go to that soccer or Little League baseball game instead of driving two hours south for work where another city reaps the benefits from the workers that live outside of our county and take their earned income back to their city. Over 140,000 vehicles travel through the 101, 118, and the 23 freeways daily. By having local residents working on projects like this and not stuck in their vehicles, sitting in a parking lot idling down the 101 down south, this will reduce gas emissions and positively affect the returns on climate mitigation efforts. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Glad we finally got you on board.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I think that's our last public speaker, so we have staff responses, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, there are a couple of comments that staff would like to, um, provide clarification on. The first one is regarding, um, the comment by Mr. Clint Foltz regarding the affordable unit categories for the project. Um, the proposed project doesn't include any moderate income units. Um, the affordable units are 16, uh, 16 in the very, uh, in the low-income category and 18 in the very low-income category. So like to mention that. And then there was another comment provided regarding, um, impacts on schools. Uh, the proposed project does include conditions of approval requiring the applicant to pay project impact fees. Um, that includes fees for the school districts, um, as part of this project. And then the other comment that was provided, um, earlier was regarding the oak tree impacts. Staff would like to mention that, um, as we evaluate the proposed projects, uh, tree impacts, we do look at the oak tree ordinance and we also implement the oak tree preservation and protection guidelines. Um, staff would like to mention that of the 430, um, protected oak trees, oh, sorry, protected trees on the site, uh, 325 of those are oak trees. Um, there are five oak trees being removed, so that accounts for 2% of the oak trees that are onsite, um, as part of the removal. And then, um, staff would also like to mention that, um, although we are, uh, losing 31 protected trees, we are going to get 93, um, replacement trees as a result of the removals. Um, staff would also like to mention that we worked, um, for the past year with the applicant team to work on redesign of the project, to, um, realign the driveway access and the siding of the proposed buildings, um, to further reduce impacts on these protected trees. Um, so, um, at this point now, um, the project before you tonight is a project that reduces impacts to the, the oak trees onsite to the maximum extent feasible.
Just to touch on one other item regarding the oak tree comments, uh, there's a reference to the remodel at the Regency Soft and Center, the Westlake Plaza, um, several years ago, where heritage oak trees were removed. Uh, there was an arduous evaluation of those trees. There were borings, there's ultrasounds, there's evaluation of the tree health canopy, and it was determined that those trees were, um, not safe and they did have targets in the form of life and property so that those trees were removed. When they were removed, there was, the trees were actually hollow, so they were very precarious and it was, uh, the right thing to do. So there is an oak tree ordinance in, in place, as everyone is aware. It's been in place since 1970. It's been modified over time to address certain, um, items. Oak trees can be removed when there's a benefit to a project, uh, for a project to have them removed and built. In this case, we are getting mitigation and as Carlos mentioned, we'll be getting 93 mitigation trees. Excellent. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. There is a, a request regarding a waitlist at, at the apartment complex. I just wanted to point out that condition of approval number 19 requires the applicant to enter into an affordable housing agreement. And within that agreement, uh, that will require the operator to maintain an interest list or use an interest list from, from a Ventura County Affordable Housing Organization. And that will be, that agreement will be, uh, made subsequent to any approval and it will be reviewed by the city attorney's office.
And then if I could add a couple of comments as well before we turn it over to our environmental consultant ESA. Um, once again, both labor groups waited until the 11th hour to submit more than 400 pages of comments on the project DIR. Um, again, as a reminder, the notice of availability was released on April 15th with a 45-day public comment period from April 15th to May 31st with a planning commission meeting on June 13th and, and then tonight's meeting on June 28th. There was ample time to timely submit comments on the draft DIR, but they chose not to, while other people, organizations, and agencies were able to submit timely comments. And again, although legally, public comments can be received up until the night of the public hearing, CEQA does not require written responses to those types of comments and only requires comments, uh, responses to comments that are received during the 45-day public comment period, which the city has done, um, for all of those comments received during that period. Staff and the IR consultant ESA have done a cursory review of the letters and we do conclude that nothing raised impacts the validity of the EIR or prevents final consideration of the project tonight. However, just as we did the last time, ESA will read into the record responses to those comment letters. Um, and finally, just as I said at the last meeting, um, when they did this, I'll remind the council that you can give whatever weight or credibility you deem appropriate, given the timing for the submission of these letters and particularly since they had ample time and opportunity to provide these comments prior to tonight.
Thank you. Do we, are we going to be going through our, our rendition of the, um, EIR response as part of our staff response?
Uh, yes, um, if staff can mention that there were a couple of comments in the, a public comment period. And ESA, the EIR consultant, will be preparing, um, a response to those comments and also to the subsequent letters that were provided.
Do we have the, the name of someone that's coming down?
Yes, we have Michael, Michael Houlihan with ESA.
Thank you, Mr. Houlihan.
Good evening. I'm Michael Houlihan with Environmental Science Associates, Irvine, California. We received, uh, two letters today, dated today. One from Mitchell Si representing the Southwest Carpenters Union. The other was La Su Drury, uh, representing the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, and that's SAFER. First, uh, with Mitchell Si's comment letter. Uh, there were a number of comments for both letters, so I'm going to be reading and summarizing what the comments are and what, uh, responses there are. So it'll take some time. First on Mitchell Si's letter, uh, the comments within the first five pages of the comment letter basically reiterated the comments provided in the Response to Comments document, uh, comment numbers B1, B2, and B3. I'm sorry, of the final supplemental letter, I'm sorry. Uh, that was prepared, uh, June 23rd that you have in your packet. Section 1A of their comment letter reiterates the comments provided in Comment A1 in the final supplemental letter response prepared, uh, June 23rd, 2022. Section 1B provides a discussion on recirculation requirements, but does not identify any new significant information added as part of the final response to comments or the final supplement response to comment letter. In section 1C, it talks about impacts of COVID-19 on construction workers. The Southwest Regional Carpenters, uh, argue that a number of construction site design features, protocols, and training should be incorporated into the project to address potential health risk to construction workers due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. CEQA requires an evaluation of impacts of the, of a proposed project on the environment and mitigation of those impacts were feasible. CEQA does not generally require an evaluation of the impacts of the environment on a proposed project except where a project might exacerbate existing hazards. And that is based on the California Building Industry Association versus, uh, Bay Area Air Quality Management District. Here, the COVID-19 pandemic is an ongoing pandemic of global scale. Its existence is not an impact of the project nor are the health risks associated with it. Nor does the comment, comment, or suggest in any way which the project might exacerbate the COVID-19 pandemic. As such, the alleged effects are not impacts under CEQA. Next item was feasible mitigation. In section 1D of their letter, uh, the Carpenters Union argued that feasible mitigation has not been incorporated into the draft DIR. The IR is, is required to adopt all feasible measures, uh, for impacts found to be, uh, significant. Here, the draft DIR found all the impacts of the project to be less than significant or less than significant after mitigation. As such, the CEQA does not require any additional mitigation beyond that was, uh, that which was incorporated. In the introduction to section E, general comments provided, uh, reiterate comments B1 through B4 of the final supplemental response letter dated June 23rd, '22, which you have in your packet. Uh, greenhouse gas analysis in section 1E1 of their letter, the Carpenters Union argued that the, a draft DIR failed to evaluate consistency with the 2020 RTIP SES prepared by SCAG. First, we note that the Carpenter Union cited to a page of the draft DIR which does not exist. Apparently, this comment has been copied and pasted from this comment, uh, including the citation in the section from their comment on a prior project. Here, the draft DIR concludes consistency with SCAG's 2016, 2040 statewide plans to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, but does not identify consistency with the 2020, 2020, or 2045 plan. That's what they assert. Regardless here, the EIR did undertake the analysis as provided in the draft DIR pages 3.7, 36 through 39. The Carpenters Union also argued in this section that the draft DIR does not consider greenhouse gas emissions from sources outside of the focus area. CEQA requires an evaluation of impacts of a proposed project. To the extent the Carpenters Union suggests that the impacts not a part of this project should have been evaluated, that is beyond the scope of what CEQA requires. To the extent that the union argues that cumulative impacts are unexamined, that would not be true. See the draft DIR pages 3.7, 39 through 40. Further, the greenhouse gas emissions analysis are inherently cumulative in nature as no individual project greenhouse gas emissions will themselves individually cause noticeable climate changes. In addition, the comment asserts that the evaluation of the project's consistency with SCAG's 2016, 2040, um, plan, it asserts that there was no evaluation, but there is actually an evaluation on page 310-dash-one, um, of that 2020, 20, 2045 plan. Finally, the comment states that greenhouse gas was limited to a focused area. Section 3.7 of the draft DIR includes an evaluation of both construction and operational emissions. These are greenhouse gas emissions associated with the project, which is required under CEQA. So the EIR included that. Next, air quality and greenhouse gas mitigation. In section 1E2 of their letter, the union argues that additional mitigation is required for air quality and greenhouse gas impacts. As stated previously, all impacts are found to be less than significant with mitigation identified in the draft DIR. As a result, no additional mitigation is required. Population and housing impact. In section 1E3 of their letter, the union argues that a housing impact analysis is required due to the addition of residential units. To the extent that the union argues that additional residents may cause subsidiary physical changes and impacts, the EIR evaluates these throughout, including in its analysis of potential impacts related to public services, transportation, and utilities, uh, as provided in, uh, chapters 3.13, 14, and 16 of the draft DIR. The Carpenters Union does not allege any deficiencies with these analyses, though. To the extent that the union argues that the additional housing is itself an impact, that is contrary to actual law. CEQA is concerned with changes in the environment that are adverse, as I mentioned before. The legislature has repeatedly found that the development of housing is a benefit, not an adverse change. The lack of housing is a critical problem that threatens the economic, environmental, and social quality of life in California. As such, the development of housing units in and of itself is not, uh, an adverse effect. It's actually a benefit and not an adverse effect. In section 1F of the letter, the union argues that the EIR inadequately evaluates impacts to nearby roadways and the stress that additional residents will bring in part to already congested roadways. However, transportation congestion is not an impact under CEQA any longer. A project's effect on automobile delay should not constitute a significant environmental impact in accordance with CEQA Guidelines 15064.3A. As such, the alleged increased congestion is not an impact, uh, recognized under CEQA. The transportation analysis provided in 3.14 of the draft DIR adequately addresses the potential transportation impacts associated with the project. The evaluation includes a traffic impact study, a vehicle miles traveled analysis, and a policy consistency analysis. Next, under noise, in section G of their, of their letter, argues that the EIR does not adequately evaluate noise because it does not provide an analysis of noise levels at four specific, uh, sensitive receptors. First, the, the union is factually incorrect. The draft DIR does not find the noise impacts to be significant and unavoidable, which they identified. It finds them to be less than significant with mitigation, as shown in the draft DIR pages 3.11-dash-32 through 33. Additionally, the draft DIR did evaluate noise levels at both of the sensitive receptors identified in the letter. Uh, Westlake High School as well as the Los Robles Rehabilitation Hospital. Uh, I think in the letter, they identified it, um, as Los Robles Rehabilitation High School, not, uh, a hospital. It is unclear what other receptors the union referred to, as it does not identify the other two of the alleged four. But the EIR appropriately and conservatively evaluated impacts at the nearest sensitive receptors, which there were four of them. Uh, Appendix K of the draft DIR and Appendix D of the final response to comments includes construction noise modeling, showing only sensitive receptors that would be exposed to significant construction noise. Uh, prior to mitigation, um, would be the Westlake High School. Uh, the implementation of mitigation measure N-dash-one, as clarified on page, uh, 4-dash-17 of the final response to comments, would reduce potential noise impacts at that, at the high school. All other surrounding noise receptors were found to not exceed the construction noise threshold. Hazards. In section 1H of their letter, the union alleges that the presence of sensitive receptors, businesses, and other receptors near the project site suggests that the EIR's analysis of hazards is deficient. The union is incorrect. The EIR does address such nearby uses as identified on page 3.8-dash-10 of the draft DIR, identified and titled as proximity to sensitive land uses. The EIR does undertake analysis of transport. The EIR does undertake analysis of transport of hazardous materials, but finds that the potential for impacts to be less than significant, as identified on page 3.8-19. As such, the union is factually incorrect in their description of the EIR. Next item was wildfire. Under wildfire, the union argues that the project construction will increase congestion, increasing fire danger. As noted previously, congestion is not an impact under CEQA. That mandate cannot be avoided by phrasing it as being relative to wildfire safety. Nonetheless, the EIR expressly evaluates this and finds the impact to be less than significant, as identified on 3.17-16 through 19, which states that the project construction activities would not substantially impede emergency vehicle access or impair emergency response plan or evacuation plan. Next item, impacts to trees. In section 1.1 of their letter, the union argues that there is no analysis of whether tree mitigation will be effective. Here, the EIR contains extensive requirements in its mitigation measures to ensure that the replacement trees are protected and survive in the mitigation measures by O1, by O5, and by O6, as provided in the draft EIR on pages 3.313 through 14, as well as 3.3-18 through 19. Next item, community and general plan consistency. In section 2.8.1 of their letter, they argue that the draft EIR inadequately evaluates consistency with the central city community plan. The project is not within any community plan area. The the union appears to list a set of goals and policies from the city's general plan. Consistency with the general plan is thoroughly evaluated in table 3.10-1 of the draft EIR. I think they were referring to a different city in that case. Housing element. In section 2.8.2 of their letter, the union states that the recently adopted housing element was not addressed. However, the goals of the recently adopted housing element were discussed in section 3.12 of the draft EIR. Those were the summary of Mitchell's size and the carpenter union's comments and responses to to those. Next is the comment letter from Lusu Drury. Comment letter was received, both of them were received today, as I mentioned. Section 1 of the letter addresses the legal background of CEQA, which reiterates the comments provided in comment A1 of the final supplemental letter dated June 23rd. Comment alleges that, and then the next item was related to biological resources. The comment alleges that the biological survey conducted by the project's biologist for the for the project was too cursory to reflect a true inventory of the wildlife species that occur at the site, and that the report failed to analyze the time of day the survey started, how long the survey lasted, and the weather conditions. The commenter mischaracterizes what type of analysis of require required in an EIR's discussion of existing environmental setting. According to CEQA, the description of the environmental setting shall be no longer than is necessary to provide an understanding of the significant effects of the proposed project and its alternatives in order to give the most accurate and understandable picture of the project's likely near and long-term impacts. That requirement is identified in CEQA guidelines 151259A. The draft EIR describes the physical setting extensively of this highly urbanized area so as to provide the public an understanding of the project and potential impacts of the project on the biological resources found on site. The analysis is based on more than the general biological site visit, which was conducted to verify site conditions at the time. The analysis was based on research of multiple databases, as reported in the draft EIR and a site visit. Methods used in evaluating the project included a review of project plans, a literature review of biological resources occurring on the project site and surrounding vicinity, a jurisdictional delineation, and a general biological survey, including vegetation mapping and a general habitat assessment. Field surveys were conducted to document the existing conditions of the project area. A general biological survey and habitat assessment were conducted on the project site to map existing vegetation communities and determine habitat suitability for sensitive plant and animal species. The methods for research and data, field data collection, conducted for the project's biological technical report were consistent with accepted standards. The project biologists visited the site on two occasions, once in 2018 and again in 2021, during times of day generally starting in the morning and during weather conditions suitable for biological surveys. Biologists surveyed the entire project site on foot with the aid of binoculars. Representative photographs of the project site were taken with selected photographs of the site included in our appendix D1 of the draft EIR. Plant and animal species observed or otherwise detected were recorded in field notebooks. Animal identifications were made in the field by direct visual observations or indirectly by direct by detection of calls, burrows, tracks, or scat. As a result of the survey, the biologists found a total of 11 sensitive animal species were recorded within the Thousand Oaks Quarter Angle database research. This quarter angle is two miles by two miles, basically, two miles by two miles. The analysis represents substantial evidence supporting the description of the existing environmental setting on the project site and the adequacy of the biological survey that was conducted by the project's biologists. The use of CNDDDB is the CDFW accepted standard as it is verified by the agencies. The additional databases noted in the comment letter, which they identified the databases as eBird and iNaturalist, provide occurrences occurrence data not confirmed or verified by the resource agencies. As a result, these two sites are not generally reliable and are thus not utilized as references for understanding current site conditions. Though not referenced in the report, eBird was reviewed to understand if any specific verifiable occurrences were located on or immediately adjacent to the project site. The list of birds noted in the comment letter do not represent birds currently provide that currently are provided state or federal protections. A full compendium of birds and animal species observed on the site during the time of the survey is provided as appendix A and B to our appendix D1 of the draft EIR. Of those birds listed in the compendium, potential impacts to those with state and federal listings were analyzed and addressed in the technical study, and mitigation was recommended as appropriate. Next item, 2A2. The commenter alleges that the draft EIR failed to adequately analyze the potential impacts of habitat loss to breeding birds. The commenter is incorrect. The biologists surveyed the entire project where they found a total of nine bird species. This study recognizes that the project site has the potentials to support songbird and raptor nests due to the presence of shrubs, ground cover, and trees on the site, and that project activities could disturb or destroy active migratory bird nests, including eggs and young. Because disturbance to or destruction of migratory bird eggs, youngs, or adults is in violation of the Migratory Bird Treaty Act and is considered a potential significant impact, the draft EIR contains protections for nesting birds were provided in mitigation measure by O4, consistent with the Migratory Bird Act. In their section of the letter, section 2A3, the comment asserts that the project would interfere with wildlife movement. Here, the analysis determined that the project is not within the draft EIR, is not within a wildlife corridor, is supported by substantial evidence. Using both a site visit and desktop analysis of the resource contained in the project area and the surrounding areas, the draft EIR analysis determined that the area does not contain a significant wildlife corridor. The, in addition, the project site is not part of a regional corridor. The project site is not identified in any wildlife corridors or linkages identified by the South Coast Missing Lynx Project. The nearest wildlife movement corridor identified by the Lynx Project is the Santa Monica Sierra Madre Connection, located approximately five miles to the east. The project site does not directly connect two or more large blocks of habitat and is surrounded by development, including roads, highways, residences, and business parks. Therefore, impacts to wildlife movement and migratory species would be less than significant, and mitigation is not warranted. Their comment, section 2A4. The commenter alleges that the EIR fails to analyze the project's impact on wildlife from additional traffic generated by the project. This is a highly urbanized area with thousands of daily vehicular trips. Nevertheless, the commenter does not raise concerns with the extensive existing urbanized development and existing potential roadkill risk, but raises concerns about roadkill being increased by the project due to vehicle miles traveled, estimated for buildout of the focus plan area. Since the project is not growth inducing, the VMT would consist of traffic already present in the region that is redirected, and as demonstrated in the draft EIR, project is estimated to have a per capita VMT of 8.99, which is substantially below the regional average. There is no evidence that the increased traffic in the already urbanized project area will result in a significant increase in wildlife roadkill. Because the area is developed and not pristine wildlife habitat and does not support high-quality habitat for special status species or significant wildlife corridors or significant nursery sites, the likelihood of roadkill of wildlife, including special status species, is low. It is not expected that the project will result in a significant impact related to roadkill. Their section 2A5 of their letter. The commenter alleges that the EIR fails to account for the increased possibility of bird window collision mortality that will be caused by the project. As explained in the draft EIR, the project area and its surroundings are urbanized and does not provide habitat that can sustain special status species. Urban-adapted and common birds are the most likely species to collide with windows. Moreover, as reported in the San Francisco Standards for Bird Safety Bird Buildings and other documents, the typical bird strike zone is from grade from the grade to 60 feet. The primary concern is with any uninterrupted glazing of 24 feet or larger in size. The likelihood of strike depends on the glazing used, these are windows, the angle of the glass, the orientation of the building, and landscaping. In the urban setting, birds spend the majority of the time in landscape vegetation in the bird strike zone, where the vegetation may be reflected in glass, making the glass look like vegetation and undetectable to the bird. As shown in the draft EIR, the proposed, actually, it's as shown in the specific plan, the bird, the proposed building facades include many materials other than glass that are visible to birds. These materials include cement plaster, fiber cement siding, porcelain tile, green screens, vinyl windows, aluminum windows, metal awnings, metal railings, and perforated metal panels. These project design features would serve to minimize operational impacts related to the risk of bird strikes. Next, section 2A6 of their letter. The comment alleges that the EIR fails to address the impact that house cats introduced by the project may have on vertebrae wildlife and the environment. The commenter erroneously assumes that the project would introduce hundreds of cats that would roam and hunt around the project site, killing vertebrae wildlife. As explained in the draft EIR, the project area and its surroundings are highly urbanized. Cats most likely already exist in the project vicinity, and animals in the area are already adapted to the risk associated with urban life and potential predators, such as cats. Further, although the project may increase the number of cats living on the project site as residents move within, move there with their cats or their pet cats, it is not reasonably foreseeable that the project's residents would keep their cats outside, rather apartments residents would be expected to keep all pets, including cats, inside their residence. Thus, there is no reasonable likelihood that house cats introduced by the project will have a significant impact on the environment. Section 2A7 of their letter. The commenter incorrectly states that the EIR finds project impacts to be cumulatively considerable only when not fully mitigated at the project level. Rather, each impact analysis contains an independent cumulative analysis. For instance, with respect to potential impacts to special status species habitat, the EIR finds that implementation of the cumulative project development in the vicinity of the project could impact plant and wildlife species. But the majority of the nearby project sites are in urbanized areas that are not conducive to the support, to support the plant and wildlife special status species. And therefore, the cumulative impact is less than significant, as identified in the draft EIR page 3.3-11. On the other hand, the final EIR finds that the cumulative impacts with respect to riparian habitat and other sensitive natural communities are potentially significant, as identified in the draft EIR page 3.3-13. However, mitigation is incorporated to address the project's incremental contribution to such impacts, and therefore, the project's incremental contribution is found to be less than significant. That discussion is on the, in the draft EIR on page 3.313 and 3.315. For the same reason, the the next portion of their comment was referencing Dr. Smallwood's information. Dr. Smallwood was incorrect that the EIR only considers an impact to be cumulatively considerable when not fully mitigated. As discussed above, the EIR appropriately undertakes an evaluation of the cumulative impact for each impact evaluated, independent of the project level impact analysis. And that's done throughout the EIR. Section 2A8. The commenter suggests adding additional mitigation measures above and beyond what was was required in the draft EIR. I only have two pages left. The commenter suggests adding additional mitigation.
This is really very exciting. I think that all the people that are here, you know, they could be a Top Gun two, but this is more, this is much more entertaining, I'm sure.
Good. Commenter suggests adding additional mitigation measures above and beyond what was required in the draft EIR. Here, the draft EIR found all biological impacts of the project to be less than significant or less than significant with mitigation recommended and imposed. As such, SEQA does not require additional mitigation to be incorporated. More of a summary of the biological comments and responses. In summary, the additional items noted in the comments are not items typically analyzed in standard biological technical studies and don't represent standard data collected on project sites. As noted in the description of the current site conditions provided in the biological technical study, the project site is within an already heavily urbanized area and does not include an identified wildlife corridor. For this reason, potential issues relative to increases in traffic, roadkill, and bird strikes were not considered additionally beyond those already experienced currently in the existing urban setting. The urban interface issues relative to cat predation are typically considered significant when a project site occurs adjacent to conservation areas, known to be suitable habitat and conservation value. In these cases, it is recommended that potential cat population introduced by proposed new housing are controlled with project design features, such as fencing or homeowner pet restrictions. The project site does not occur adjacent to such conservation areas, and as a result, no mitigation measures relative to cat population controls were recommended. In their comment letter, section B one, commenter asserts that the project failed to substantially connect the project's air quality impacts to the likely health consequences as identified by SEQA. Since the construction of the project would produce diesel particulate matter, DPM, emissions from construction equipment for approximately 40 months, and the project is expected to generate about close to 1,800 daily vehicle trips, which would produce additional exhaust emissions to nearby sensitive receptors, the commenter asserts that the project failed to connect the toxic air contaminant emissions to potential health risk to nearby receptors and failed to meet the SEQA requirement. The commenter states that the OEA, which is a document by the state, recommends that all short-term projects lasting at least two months assess cancer risk for a 30-year residential exposure duration. The commenter asserts that the draft EIR failed to compare the project's excess cancer risk to the Ventura County APCD threshold of 10 in a million. As stated in the draft EIR on page 3.2-29, the OEA, which is the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, has identified carcinogenic effects from long-term exposure, but has not identified health effects due to short-term exposure to a diesel exhaust. According to OEA, health risk assessments which determine the exposure of sensitive receptors to TAC emissions, that's toxic air contaminant emissions, should be based on a 30-year exposure period for the maximal exposed individual resident that is in proximity to the activity generating TAC emissions. The nearest resident residential sensitive receptor is located approximately 1,800 feet on the south side of the freeway, as well as the nearest one on the north side is about 2,200 feet to the northwest. Although construction would take place over a four-year period, it would represent a small fraction of the recommended exposure duration, and not all months during construction would involve heavy equipment. Therefore, due to the relatively short period of exposure, construction wouldn't, tax generated during construction would not be expected to result in concentrations causing significant health risk to the nearest resident and a construction HRA. A qualitative evaluation of the health risk was appropriate. The commenter is correct that the project is expected to generate almost 1,800 daily vehicle trips once in operation. However, as stated on page 3.2-20 and 3.2-30 of the draft EIR, most of the vehicles would be gasoline-fueled and not a substantial source of tax. In addition, typical operational sources of tax include industrial manufacturing process and automotive repair facilities. The project wouldn't include those, those types of potential sources or operate any permitted direct emissions, such as those from a point source such as a diesel generator. The project consists of a multifamily development and subterranean parking and four-story parking structure. Operation of the project would mainly involve passenger vehicles, which, as previously stated, are not a substantial source of TAC. As a result, toxic or carcinogenic air pollutants are not expected to occur in any substantial amounts in conjunction with the operation of the project proposed land use within and on the project site. Therefore, a qualitative operational HRA that was provided in the draft EIR is adequate. No additional analysis is required. Next item, section two, point B, point two, last one. Section two, point B dash two of Drury's letter, which is Safer, he represents Safer, asserts that the EIR failed to adequately analyze the project's greenhouse gas impacts. The commenter states that there are two inadequacies, namely, the EIR allegedly failed to consider the performance-based standards under CARB's Scoping Plan and SCAG's RTIP SCS. Safer's letter attached a document from SWAP, which expands somewhat on Safer's comments. First, SWAP alleges that the EIR failed to consider VMT benchmarks in CARB's plan. This allegation is inaccurate. The EIR fully considered the project's VMT impacts and included them in the project's GHG calculations, as identified in the draft EIR on page 3.7-23, also on 3.4-17. Notably, SWAP suggests, based in, based in SWAP's methodology, that CARB's Scoping Plan has a target in Ventura County of 21.59 vehicle miles traveled per capita in the year 2030. By comparison, the project is expected and estimated to have a per capita VMT of 8.99. That's in the draft EIR, page 3.14-17. The EIR fully analyzed and considered CARB's Scoping Plan. Even assuming SWAP's methodology is correct, the project's VMT is substantially below CARB's target for VMT per capita. SWAP makes the same erroneous assumption regarding SCAG's daily VMT per capita target in Ventura County, which SWAP states should decrease to 19.6 VMT per capita by 2045. As previously noted, the project is well below existing VMT per capita in the county and fully consistent with this target. Moreover, the EIR explicitly discusses its consistency with SB 375 and the passenger-vehicle related target, reduction targets. That's on the draft EIR on page 3.7-31, 3.7-36 to 3.7-40. Those were the summary of the comments and the responses. And I know that we had heard from Amelia Fuentes, who actually was providing a summary of these same comments in her oral comments tonight. So it basically covers her comments, too.
Thank you for the staff response, and thank you for the reminder why I didn't choose attorney as a career, so. Do we have any other staff responses to the comments?
No additional staff responses to the comments.
Very good. We have some rebuttal time for our applicant.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'll be very brief. First of all, I think I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Julian. He was very thorough and addressed this late submission of letters today that, in a way in which he's done the whole EIR, the 4,000-page EIR, which I'm sure the staff and we as a developer appreciate the thoroughness because it's a very important document to make sure all bases are covered with respect to providing information, which is after all what it is, an information document. The only thing I would say is just about the oaks, it's classic competing interests here. We, Carlos mentioned that we're taking about 2% of the regulated trees, but out of the 600 that exist, even some of the unregulated, we're at less than 1%. And I think that going back to our site planning analysis of what we've done here has been, you know, focused on that from day one, so I don't think we can do any better than that and still get a yield that is reasonable. And that really speaks to the main issue that I heard on public testimony. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
I think we can go ahead and close the public hearing. Very good. Council discussion, do we have any further discussion on this matter? Mr. McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for our legal experts. If I understand this correctly, there's 45 days in which a SEQA complaint could be filed, California Environmental Quality Act, established in 1970. And do I hear correctly that with two hours to go before that 45-day window closed, the carpenters' union filed these complaints? Is that, is that correct?
So actually, the, since this is, we'll be filing what's called a notice of determination, it starts a 30-day statute limitation, it's not 45. But SEQA requires, allows public comments up until the time that you make a decision. There is a formal public comment period, a 45-day public comment period, where any comments that are received during that time, we are legally obligated to provide written responses. Anything after that point in time, we're not legally obligated to provide written responses. But it's important, and the reason why I asked our consultant to provide responses and to read it into the record is because it's important to have a complete record, because if there is litigation involved, it's important that we have all of the information that we can have, if possible. Given the lateness of the filing of these letters, however, forces us to do it during city council meetings. So thank you very much for, you know, that, I mean, that's not an easy task. That's a huge endeavor on our consultant's part to do so, but it's important to do that to ensure that we have a complete record if we, if litigation does ensue.
I do appreciate, again, thank you also, again, for your legal analysis and explanations, much appreciated. But coming back to the question, they had a long time period in which to respond. What is their purpose in waiting to the 11th hour, two hours before meeting, to dump 4,000 pages onto this gentleman there to review and provide summary?
400.
400 pages. Why would, why are we, why is the carpenters' union doing that instead of filing at the beginning of the period that they had an opportunity?
You know, that's a question you would have to ask them, but I will tell you that this is a tactic that has been used by, you know, various organizations and groups over the years. It is, it is a common tactic. It's unfortunate because at the end of the day, you know, what we strive for is to provide, you know, information so that the public and you can make an educated decision on a project. This actually, in my personal opinion, kind of stifles that ability. It actually, you know, makes it much more difficult. Had we received those comments earlier, you know, we possibly could have even had more well-thought-out comments. I honestly, I thought that the comments were amazing, but, you know, if they're, if they're brought forward sooner, it really provides an opportunity for us to consider those comments. It defeats the whole purpose, I think, but that's just my personal opinion.
No, I appreciate the personal opinion because I'm looking at this as something that was put in place in 1970 to help protect the environment. And that's always on people's lists of priorities. We want to take care of the environment, but this seems like it's been bastardized into delay tactics that could be used by the carpenters' union to delay a project, which in turn drives up the price. Now, look at how many staff members here and how many people in the audience here and the cost of dollars that we as a city have already expended, let alone the developer, and that's driving up the cost of housing because the carpenters obviously want to get something out of this action. Because in the IMT project over at the old Kmart site two weeks ago, I, you know, the carpenters' union suddenly became the Sierra Club that were concerned about trees that might have died after the project's completed. And today, now we've looked at the carpenters' union morphing into PETA. Now they're concerned about, oh, I don't know, wildlife such as birds, bird strikes, habitat loss, migratory of birds, roadkill, house cats. I'm just as fond of house cats as anybody else, but what place does that have in the environment, other than I think this is a delay tactic by the carpenters' union to extort jobs for union carpenters and other union labor, which in turn, from the studies I've read, drives it up 30%. And that's not a good thing for affordable housing. So the unions aren't winning me over, and I'm sure they're not winning over the other council members here. They have to speak for themselves. But I can tell you that it's tactic used by the carpenters' union is not winning favors from me. So Mayor, thank you. That's the comments I want to have because I'm looking again at biologists, sound engineers, arborists, economists that all went in to do this. Those are expensive people to bring in just to say that we want to delay this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other, Al? Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor.
What?
We're discussing. Anyway, okay, well, getting back to the issue in front of us, and we do have a project that has been presented to us, and it is a very carefully thought-out infill project that is repurposing a severely underutilized parking lot, acres and acres of asphalt, with, I think, a very walkable project, a project that is providing affordable housing, particularly, I think, which could be workforce housing, which we've been looking for, considering the fact that you have Oaks Christian High School, you have Westlake High School, you have Las Robes Rehab, all within the area. Like to think that some of these folks would live in this complex. The design is very attractive. It's almost like an urban park that you've created. I particularly like the area between the parking garage and the apartments, which has an outdoor theater, a couple of the things I read, really, Kin's Nature Play and Oak Trail. Again, you're utilizing the topography and actually making it far better than what's there now. And you've really made the trees a part of the project. And yeah, we're losing a couple of trees, but it's less than 1% of the oak trees that are there. And I don't like losing oak trees, but, you know, on benefits, risk-benefits analysis, it's a, it's a price that we have to pay to get a project in there that I think is very beneficial. And no density bonus, which enables you to preserve even more than you would normally be able to do. And the key thing for me is... And the key thing for me is, again, and we've talked about this before, we're developing along that 101 corridor. And the 101 corridor stretches from Lakeview Canyon and Westlake Village out to Wendy Drive. It runs along the 101, runs along the, on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and then back out to the 101 again. This is where our residents have told us time and again they want to see housing, not necessarily in the existing neighborhoods, certainly not in the open space, but along the 101 corridor. And there's, as you have said, very little conflict with any existing neighborhoods that are there now. And that's endemic of most of the 101 corridor. And that's where we're blessed in a way to have it because we can put some very important housing along there, and this project fits that. So I'm prepared to make a motion. I appreciate the time that you spent on this. I know it's been a long time coming, but I think it's a really good use of the land that's there. So I would like to move that we approve 8A, which is the Gateway Project, and all the recommendations from staff that come with it.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
I can't sit here for three and a half hours and not say anything. I mean, that's beyond my ability. I like the project. I like the increase of affordable units. I like the area that where it's being put. It's not going to any use right now. To me, that is an ideal spot. I don't think it blocks anybody's view of anything. You can barely see it through the trees. I mean, I think it has all the aspects of a project that will be beneficial. Appears to be attractive, attractive. It has a lot of other amenities. I just think it's, I agree with Mr. Edie. It's the right time, the right place, and whatever other rights he has. So if we required seconds, I would second that, Al.
Ms. Bill de la Peña.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. This has been quite a few years in the making for Mr. Edie, and here you are at long last. I appreciate your open channel of communication over the years and direct channel of communication. I have to say that this is, that you have taken great interest and pride in really listening to the residents and to receive feedback from various local groups. And though, yes, oak trees and protected landmark trees are always a concern, considering the size of the project, the number of trees we have here, you did really your best to ensure that you are removing as few trees as possible, in my opinion. I am also pleased to see that your environmental features in this particular project are really well-thought-out. The Fit Well program is a good one, and you really have checked that box for me as well. Traffic is still a concern, but it remains to be seen, probably more so in the morning than it is in the afternoon. This is an underutilized area. It truly is. And the fact that you are not requesting estate density bonus is very much appreciated by me. You increase the number of units overall, but you also increase the number of low-income units. And I just would like to go on the record that from now on, I would really like to see for future projects that developers reach out to other local nonprofit groups such as We Belong and Thrive, groups which are trying to advocate for a fair representation of people with developmental disabilities. That is super important, and if they could get in line for some of those units, that would be great. You have convinced me that this is a project that should be approved. I congratulate you on the efforts and also for not counting just to three for votes, but all five. I really, really appreciate that. Not every developer does that. I said it at the last council meeting two weeks ago, and we need more of that. We need more of developers that really will bring true public benefit to our community and really get buy-in from everyone. So I will certainly approve the motion tonight.
Thank you. And Mr. McNamee, one more time?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say, Mr. Edie, thank you very much for the amenities that you've added there to the facility. It's a beautiful, beautiful building. It's actually one of the best that I could see as far as being a true mixed-use, in that an easy walk to the promenade would satisfy everything from groceries to movies to shops to dining. It's a beautiful location that people will be able to reduce the number of trips in their vehicle and actually walk, which is unusual we can do here in the city just by the nature of the layout that's been designed since the 1970s. I also would like to thank you for listening to the opportunity, and you have the vision of what the tutoring center offers to students there to be more by having quality tutors come in and help those students that live at the facility. As an educator myself, I see the changes that happen when a student gets a new skill that's able to be used in the market, changes lives, changes futures, and you can saw the benefit of it, and I appreciate your vision and understanding how it will help the community and a great community benefit, and I thank you. Mayor?
Go right ahead.
I did forget to mention that I do appreciate the centers, and I appreciate you ensuring that they will not be used as a tool to criticize our wonderful public school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I always get the last word. That's the beauty of being the mayor. Any of these projects, I try to look for the balance of what is good for our community. On one side, there are some trees that are going to be sacrificed for this project, and I appreciate the developer looking at that and taking it to heart and reducing the number that would need to be taken out to the absolute minimum. Many of those are trees that were planted by the original developer 40 years ago, so they've had a chance to grow in. But most of those are landscape trees. They're not going to impact the riparian area, which is important as well. But most importantly, I think, on the positive side, is we are gaining some housing, a much-needed housing that has been identified by many of our business community members as a detriment for them recruiting in people from outside areas. There's just no housing. My personal experience, just three weeks ago, my son-in-law's, or my son's sister-in-law moving here to Thousand Oaks, husband just got a job at Amgen, can't find a place in town. So they're living down in Camarillo somewhere now. That's the type of thing we need to address, that we need to correct so that we can be competitive with other areas in bringing in talent. Both of them were PhDs, and they couldn't find a place here in town. It's compatible with the area. As Mr. McNamee pointed out, we have an office space there, large 400,000-square-foot office. We have the promenade center for commercial and for entertainment and for food stores. And now we have a housing element all within that same block. It's compatible. It's the right thing for the right area. I think I have to compliment the applicant. And this is, we're going back-to-back here. We had IMT a couple of weeks ago come to us with a project for the Kmart location that we now call T.O. Ranch. And now we have a quality developer coming for a project on the old Baxter site. We are batting 1,000 right now, and thank you for the quality you're bringing to us and how you have presented, gone out to the community, and engaged the community to come up with a project that really works for everyone. And then finally, the amenities, the amenities seem to be something that is sellable for you. Whatever you need to put in those amenities is fine. I understand the different centers you have there, that you have a pool, you have all sorts of amenities that really help that project be a sellable project. So thank you for that. And then finally, I appreciate the fact that you're going the extra mile to make this as green a building as possible. That will help us going into the future, not only with our energy consumption, but also I appreciate the fact you're taking out a paved parking lot, adding green space that will allow percolation of rainwater into the ground. That is a little thought of attribute of this type of development, and thank you for bringing that forward. I, too, will be happy to support this, and with that, I would call for a vote.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0, and I have two ordinance titles to read. Ordinance adopting specific plan number 23, One Baxter Way, and its associated general plan amendment, and authorizing the land uses and development standards in said specific plan. Applicant, One Baxter Way, LP. Ordinance approving a development agreement, One Baxter Way. Applicant, One Baxter Way, LP.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I just wanted to take a moment to this, we're closing out our fiscal year here, and we're closing out one of the most challenging years in terms of the volume of work that we've had. And Carlos Contreras has had both of these projects, IMT and Baxter, on his shoulders, carrying them through all the environmental, the planning commission, and the city council as a relatively new planner with us. He's had a whole team around him, CDD all rallying together, Steve Kern's leadership, Kathy Naum working on the traffic components, Nodder and Cliff, and the entire team from Public Works there, Noel on the legal team, along with all the support. There's a lot of folks that are involved in this, including our consultant team working with the developer, and I'm just immensely proud of all their work. I'm very appreciative. It's been a lot on Carlos's shoulders, and so I just wanted to make sure we acknowledge that here tonight.
Let me just echo that, Mr. Powers. In the past year, we've added over, I believe it's 120, 125 affordable units in town.
With tonight's approval, it's 114.
114 affordable units in our town within this year. That matches everything for the past 15 years. So I'm very proud of that, and I'm proud of our staff for helping us push that through. And I'm very appreciative of our development community who is allowing us to do this. Let's, and with that, I'll call for a little bit of a break, and I apologize to our cannabis ordinance folks who are here in the community, but let's just take five minutes, please, five minutes only. Tonight, I'll gavel it back in. We have a third public hearing tonight, and I'll turn it over to our very esteemed Deputy City Clerk, Madam Clerk.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8B regarding a municipal code amendment regarding adult-use cannabis, MCA 2022-70430. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Three people have presented speaker cards in pursuant to council standards. They are allowed five minutes. The applicant is allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Very good. Thank you so much. We do have staff ready to present. We have Melissa Hurtado, and standing or sitting next to her is Patrick Heher. So, please go ahead and present.
Thank you, Mayor Engler, and council members. This is going to be a brief 10-slide presentation, so we will get going here. Tonight, we are going to be with you with the proposed amendment to the city's municipal code regarding adult-use cannabis. Over the last five years, city council worked through several meetings, discussions, and workshops that ultimately concluded with the current state of cannabis regulation in Thousand Oaks, which allows for two retail medical cannabis operators and two testing laboratories. In February, our two retail operators opened their doors to the public. Soon after, they contacted the city and filed for a municipal code amendment to expand their sales to include adult-use cannabis. On April 12th of this year, city council initiated a municipal code amendment to consider adding adult-use cannabis to the code. Our two operators, Legendary Organics and Leaf Dispensaries, and their pictures are here, they'll explain their positions tonight, but we will be giving you a few data points, and we'll describe the amendments to the municipal code. When the city began discussing potential cannabis businesses in town, adult-use dispensaries were only under consideration by other cities in Ventura County. None had been approved nor established. Medicinal cannabis dispensaries were commonplace in 2017, as only a year had passed since the legalization of adult-use cannabis. At the time, the two operators were confident that the medicinal-only business model would work. More than four years after the initial ordinance adoption, four other cities in Ventura County now allow for both medicinal and adult-use sales in their respective jurisdictions, Ojai, Oxnard, Port Juaniemi, and Ventura. In reviewing the state's database on licensed dispensaries in California, of 1,019 total dispensaries, only 15 are medicinal-only. The operators contend that the requirement for a medical recommendation has created confusion with customers because it is very uncommon. Another contention that you will hear about from the operators is that companies from outside of the city can make deliveries of adult-use cannabis, and it creates an unlevel playing field for the two businesses here in town. So, let's go over the ordinance amendments proposed to you tonight. Title V, Chapter 29 covers regulatory code, and Title IX, Chapter 4, covers the zoning Amendments to the regulatory section of the ordinance, Title V, are in two areas. The draft ordinance contains a new definition for adult-use cannabis, redefines the cannabis retailer to include both adult-use and medicinal cannabis. The draft ordinance states that at any given time, the maximum number of cannabis retailers shall be two. Also added were operational requirements for adult-use sales mainly pertaining to identification, and an amendment to language for medicinal sales that is consistent with state law. In addition, staff used this opportunity to clean up language that was outdated in the ordinance. For example, the Bureau of Cannabis Control no longer exists. It was replaced with state, and defined to provide for future changes in state regulatory structure. Ownership was also redefined to be consistent with state law. The amendments to Title IX include defining adult-use cannabis and redefining cannabis retailer. In the zoning matrix, under medical care uses, the word "medical" was stricken from the title, and now states "cannabis retailer." And a new section was added to personal and general services for cannabis retailer. Title IX went before the Planning Commission on June 13th, and was recommended for approval by a 4-0 vote with one commissioner absent. Since the M1 zone is the only area where a cannabis dispensary can be located, and their locations have been thoroughly vetted and were approved by city council, amending the municipal code to allow the two operators to sell adult-use cannabis at these locations will not have a negative impact that has not already been examined through city and state regulations. Staff is recommending that city council amend Title V, Chapter 29, to allow the two cannabis retailers to sell adult-use in addition to medical cannabis, as well as make modifications to the various definitions and other portions of Chapter 29, along with modifying definitions in the zoning matrix in Title IX, Chapter 4, to allow the cannabis retailer to operate in the M1 zone. So, the draft ordinance before you, we are recommending that it be introduced, and the recommendation is further explained in the staff report. Alongside me, I have Chief Assistant Attorney Patrick Heher, and I have Steve Kern, the Planning Manager, and on Zoom, we have our consultant from HDL Companies, Ajay Kuluri, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions of our staff? Very good. No questions of our staff. We do have a couple of public speakers. So, let's talk to our applicant first.
If I may, Mayor?
Before we get to public speakers.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Over here. If I may, I think we have the applicants to speak.
Yes. Yeah, I'm going to go through the applicants, then we have a couple of public speakers. I believe Mr. McFarland and Mr. Davis coming down. Very good. You will have an aggregate of 15 minutes, gentlemen.
Good evening. I want to thank the council for taking this up tonight, and also the staff for all of the work they have done over the last 1,449 days since we received our permit here in the city of Thousand Oaks. I think we went through, the last meeting we had, I think we went through a lot of the issues that pertain to this discussion, and I don't think we need to belabor those points again. I think they're still the same. Nothing's really changed. And I'm available for any questions. I don't know if Mr. McFarland would like to make a comment.
Yeah, thank you. I agree. I'm just, I'm here for any questions and any comments you have.
Any questions of our applicants?
Yeah, I have a question.
Well, Ms. Bill La Peña, go up first. Sorry, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. I do have a question for the two of you. Since the initiation of this amendment, how has business been doing?
We increased our business, and we also increased the walkaway. Saturday, we had 45 people come to the store and walk out.
And what about for you, Mr. McFarland?
It's about status quo right now. We're still seeing about 50% that are walking in, and there, it's just confusion. They don't understand, you know, why they have to get a recommendation when they voted for it, and they can go anywhere to get it, outside the city. So, it's pretty much the same as it was. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
I, I'm trying to get a handle on this, because when I came on the council, there were different proposals, but they all had to do with medical marijuana. And what confuses me is when we had the Townsgate application, that was sold to us on the idea that it would be a place where no one would loiter or linger. People that were up in arms in the community were saying that, like, this could be used to spread cannabis to people that weren't old enough, or, you know, you were here that night, you remember those things. But I was under the impression that it would be more like, as I said at the previous council meeting, it'd be more like a drugstore, where you'd come in with a prescription. And then I went to both of your facilities, and I don't mean to be hypercritical, but it looked to me as if your goal really was not medical, but, you know, the other, whatever you call it. I didn't like the term recreational. And I'm not here to uproot you, or, you know, bawl you out, but I, it seems to me that when you then said that you were so surprised that people walked in and walked out, well, I don't think that they were aware that this was a medical marijuana facility. It didn't look like a drugstore. I mean, I'm just wondering what, you acted as if you were surprised when you got that treatment, but I don't know why you would have been, because it was supposed to be medical marijuana. Evidently, the people didn't understand it. I'm not, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just telling you how confused I was by that whole process, because I could see the basis for having medical marijuana, and I think the council wrestled with that before I came on. I know that there was some problem originally even with the medical marijuana, but then it was like, all right, if there is a medical need for this, we'll go forward. I think I heard you speak about the quality of the product. Is there a different quality in medical marijuana as opposed to what you're calling recreational, even though I don't care for the term recreational?
Go ahead. Ed, no, there is absolutely no difference between the product you sell as a medical product and the product you sell as an adult-use product. But what is different, what is different is the amount that you can purchase with a medical recommendation. You can purchase eight times more with a medical recommendation than you can as an adult-use.
What would be the typical medical problem with someone that wanted medical marijuana?
Insomnia. Insomnia is one of the biggest ones. Chronic pain.
So, marijuana helps people sleep?
Oh, yeah. They have a medical version of it called, I'll think.
They probably wouldn't need one.
Marinol, which is not created from the cannabis plant, but they treat people without, that have a low appetite when they're on chemotherapy with that, and cannabis provides it in a natural form. But the three, the three basic things are insomnia, chronic pain, and one more, I'll think of it.
What about the quality? One of the things that was mentioned at the earlier hearing was that some people sell bad-quality marijuana, that it has pesticide on it.
Regulated cannabis is tested. Unregulated cannabis sold in the illegal market is not.
Well, what about these other? I think there are four other, out of the 10 cities, I think four other cities have marijuana distributors or retailers, whatever the word is. Are those products all tested? Or, in other words, these four cities, whatever they have there, maybe you don't know what they have there, but do you assume that they have the same quality that you're talking about?
Ed, the industry is regulated by the state, and if you have a state license, you can only sell regulated product, and regulated product by definition is tested.
Well, pardon me, but then what, who is it that sells the poor quality? Or this is like a black market in marijuana?
Yes. Yes. 75% of what's grown in, or 70% of what's grown in California, it leaves California as an illegal market.
So, it's not sold in California, then? It's sold?
Oh, it's sold in California, and then it's also exported. This is kind of a bigger conversation for you, I think, than what, I understand that you're grappling with it, and I get that, but...
Well, I understand the need for medical marijuana. I just don't know about...
When people come into the shop and they don't have a medical recommendation, it doesn't mean that they're not trying to use it medically. Most people come into the shop who come in are trying to get some effect from the cannabis that they, that helps them do something. Most of our patients come in, and it's insomnia, or it's chronic pain. You can't treat chronic pain with an opioid, because it'll kill you. You can treat chronic pain with cannabis, because it won't kill you.
Okay.
I think...
Well, one last thing. One of the arguments used for the fact that we ought to have distributors here was people could just get on the phone and have somebody deliver it.
Yeah.
But isn't that an argument for the fact we don't need any? But isn't that an argument for the fact we don't need anything here, if you can just get on the phone and have somebody deliver it?
I guess that's a decision you'd have to make.
No, but I mean, that argument could be used either way, I presume.
I guess.
Very good, did, any other questions?
No, I've had enough, thank you.
Yeah, we, no, we do have some speakers, we have, we have speakers, we have speakers, and I was asking, these are, Ms. Bill de la Peña, you have a question? Very good.
I do, thank you, I do have a question for Mr. Heher, and that is, speaking of testing and quality control and all that, there seems to be a, a problem with some of the testing labs that have to confirm the quality that are maybe not as respectable, or don't conduct their business in the ethical fashion that they should, is that something that we are seeing more widespread?
I would say no, not for testing laboratories that are state-licensed, that has been the challenge frankly, is for the testing laboratories, it is a very expensive initiate, initial cost to, to set a testing laboratory up, that's why you've seen the challenges in our city, because our, as you know, we've allowed for two testing laboratories, and to date, they have not yet been opened. I did speak to the CEO of one of them a couple of weeks ago, and then again today, and she is just frankly, just trying to get the investment because of the pandemic, that was a poor timing for, for that, so part of it is just that they have to have the scientists, of course, and they have to have the location that where it's permitted, and then they have to have the equipment to do it correctly, but it is something that's highly regulated by the state, and since, just since we have this time to comment, I, I also want to remind council that when we started this process five years ago, five-plus years ago, it was brand-new to the state, and, and literally in this four years, there's been so many regulatory changes, including, including allowing the deliveries into the cities, and that's been a major change, that wasn't there when we started this process, and also when we started this process, it was to start off with one medical facility and one testing laboratory, then we went to two medical facilities and two testing laboratories, and I bring that up just because it was, it wasn't like, I heard council say, we're not going to do anything more, it was more of, let's start with, let's start slow and see how it goes, and I think you would see from the work that has been done by the two operators that we have now, the product that they show as far as the facility that they have, they've certainly put their time and effort into making a very high-end locations for people to come and get cannabis, whether it's for medical or possibly for adult use as well.
Okay, so, yeah, you were mentioning exactly the one case that, I'm not sure whether that will come back before the council, but one of the reasons why I think it's not working out so well is not only because of the cost, but there are other testing labs that are already doing work.
Correct, and, and they don't have, they don't have enough testing laboratories frankly, so that's another issue that they have, and that just helps with the, the time period which creates cost, and all that goes into play.
I see, all right, thank you for the clarification.
And thank you, and I think our, I, I want to narrow our topics a little bit here, we're talking about an ordinance that will allow our vendors to sell recreational as well as medical-based, and I think too, one of my colleagues here mentioned, what's the difference? This does give us the maximum amount of control over the product that is, is delivered and, and sold in our community by having our, our own dispensaries doing this, we can have the maximum, right now anybody can call, can call and just have it delivered to their house, our, we have our own vendors here, we have more input on how they do that, and I, I trust that our vendors here are using quality inspected items, that isn't something that is either black market, or is something from a non-reputable supplier. With that, I would like to go to our speakers if possible, we do have Sarah Armstrong online, please go ahead, Sarah.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I am Sarah Armstrong, I am the representative for Americans for Safe Access here in Ventura County, founded in 2002, AISA is the nation's oldest, largest national organization for medical cannabis patients. I am deeply hopeful that you will allow the expansion of adult use for these two honorable operators. For the reasons below, our organization urges you to make this change to your ordinance. One, those who are chronically ill face discrimination in the workplace, employers are reluctant to hire or promote those they feel may miss work, or perform poorly due to chronic illness. Being identified as a patient who uses cannabis therapeutically exacerbates this issue, though cannabis has been legal for therapeutic use since 1996. Those identified as medical cannabis patients may lose their jobs, face eviction, face custody issues, are ineligible for certain types of licensure, and may be vilified by family members, neighbors, or coworkers. Thus, exposure as a medical cannabis patient comes with some very real and very unpleasant consequences. For the above reasons, as soon as cannabis was legalized, patients stopped renewing their doctor's recommend, recommendations. They could now purchase their medicine without the expense and lost work a doctor's recommendation entailed. More importantly, simply showing a valid government ID in order to purchase cannabis provided a level of convenience and privacy that was necessary and meaningful. By expanding the ability of the city's two cannabis dispensaries to offer adult-use purchases, you provide invaluable privacy and other protections, allowing those who are chronically ill to enjoy the same privacy rights and ability to manage their illness with an appropriate doctor-recommended therapy that any other patient with a doctor's prescription currently enjoys. Please, these are honorable actors who have been good partners to the city, good vendors. We urge you in the strongest possible terms to allow them to also offer adult-use sales. I am sure you will not have any problems or difficulties if you do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. In-house, I think we have Seth Bacchus, followed by Trent again?
Hello, City Council, hello, everybody, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Seth, I am from, born and raised in Newbury Park, and I am a distributor in the cannabis industry. I work with dispensaries all over the Los Angeles area, supplying them with a safe cannabis product that has gone through rigorous lab testing. Thousand Oaks is at a crossroads right now, you've got the black market, which is running rampant, if you go on Weed Maps, which is a website to look up cannabis delivery services, and you type in the Thousand Oaks zip code, you're going to see anywhere from 60 to 100 illicit delivery services operating. There's a good chance none of those products have been tested, and they're, most likely have pesticides, and they have mold, so if we continue going forward without changing the code, the black market's going to run rampant, we can't control what's coming into our city, and you're not getting the tax revenue from it. If you allow Leaf and Legendary to sell recreational cannabis, they're going to be supplying a product that is safe to our community, it can be delivered safely to their home, they know where it's coming from, it's been lab-tested, and as a bonus, the city is getting the tax revenue from it, which they're not getting from the black market. So, I'll be here over the rest of the evening if you have any questions about the cannabis industry, thank you very much for your time, but I think you're in good hands with Legendary and Leaf.
Thank you, sir. We have Seth, or, I'm sorry, Trent coming down? Sigurd?
Hello, Council, again, Trent Sigurd from Newbury Park, I want to support 8B and the support for adult-use cannabis. After approved, I would suggest a condition that tax revenues go into a pool, and that the community gets to decide what to do with this pool of tax revenue. I would suggest looking at Denver, Denver, Colorado, they have a e-bike rebate program, and I think using this tax revenue for something like that could bring some positive change to the community through something that seems a little controversial. Members of council have mentioned that customers wouldn't want to pay the high tax, customers and patients I've spoken to are happy to do so, and they say it can even feel charitable when you know the funds and the tax dollars that they are spending are going to a good place. So, yeah, just want to say I support it, support adult use, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We have any further questions of staff? We have no more public speakers?
The only thing I would, I would add briefly is just that we do have operations agreements with both of these retailers, and those will be modified, but it does require that they have conditions such as no loitering and no signage, so there are some very restrictive aspects to our code and to the conditions for each of these locations, and those will remain, thank you.
I'd like to ask another question.
I think Ms. Bill de la Peña had a, her finger up a second ago, so I'm gonna go with her.
No, that's okay, you can, I'll wait.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Do we have any idea what percentage is of people that use it, as you're calling it now, adult use as opposed to medical use? Do we have any, any handle on it, is it 50/50, or 70/30, or?
Can you rephrase your question?
Yeah, what percentage use it for medical as opposed to those that use it for what you're calling adult use?
Hmm, the people that I know that talk, I'm more focused on the...
Well, in other words, you don't have a handle on that?
I don't, I, I don't, I can tell you that the 46 people that walked out on Saturday may use it medically, but they couldn't, they couldn't get it from, from our shop, and they couldn't get it from David's shop, but I can tell you, just from our, our experience when talking to people, they're talking to us about medical conditions, mostly insomnia and, and chronic pain, so, and anxiety, those are the three things that, that they take it for.
So if they, if they actually went to a doctor and got a prescription to get your product, they'd get the identical product to somebody that walks in?
It's, there's no difference between the products.
Is that the end of the medical marijuana industry, then?
Maybe, there was some discussion about that, other states have taken away the medical and gone strictly to adult use, which is what Washington State did.
But you say that, that, whatever you call it, a lot of people do use it for medical problems, is, isn't that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying that, that, yeah, to just use it to get silly is not what our experience is, that's not what we're selling, we're not selling that, that thing.
Well, if somebody comes in with a prescription, this is my last question, if somebody comes in with a prescription...
One second, one second.
What do you give them?
You just understand something, you cannot write a prescription for something that's not recognized as a legal drug.
Right.
So a, a, a medical doctor cannot just write a prescription and send it to, with somebody and come into our shop and, and buy it, that doesn't work that way, you have to get a medical recommendation, which is through a service that provides physicians who have training in understanding what cannabis does and what its benefits are, and what its risks are, and then that's how you get the recommendation. It's not a prescription, it's a recommendation, so there's a very, there's a very big difference between the two, and not all doctors can write that recommendation.
Very good.
There's a whole, there's a whole industry around creating medical recommendations across the United States, and it's done through telemedicine.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Jones, we do have AJ Kholri, who is from HDL, who is our consultant for this project in this matter, and he is on Zoom, and he might have an answer for you as well, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, thank you, so, again, my name's Ajay Kholri, I work for HDL Companies. Regarding the, the medical question of the percent of overall sales, it's difficult because the state doesn't grant access to its data, a breakdown for medical versus recreational or adult-use sales, but there have been reports about this, and the breakdown is roughly 90% recreational sales versus 10% medicinal sales in California today.
Very good, thank you. Let's, we have no more public speakers, no more questions for our staff, let's close our public hearing.
And I would like to make a motion.
It seems like you were waiting down there. Yes, go ahead, we have discussion and motion time, so go ahead.
I feel very comfortable making a motion to approve staff recommendation to read the ordinance and title only.
Very good discussion.
Well, just that the gentleman who spoke is absolutely right, black-market cannabis is running rampant, and, and just as he said, there's no quality control, there's no permits for delivery, there's no paying of taxes, this is a way that we, at least we can have some control of what's happening within our city, and keep in mind, it's still going to be in the M1 zone, not going to be on T.O. Boulevard, you got to be 21 and over to, to purchase, and, and as I say, we can enforce the safety standards that I think are very important, because there's a lot of bad stuff out there, there really is, so, and you know what, it's, we okayed medical, but times have changed, and it's incumbent upon us to let these folks go with the adult use, because I am convinced if they don't, they're going to fail, the business is going to fail, and they've been working on this for three or four years now, at least, and we're the ones who started it in a sense by allowing the medical, times have changed, and we have to adapt to the change, and, and I think we need to support it so these businesses continue to prosper.
So it's your recommendation, Al?
No, Claudia made the motion. I was speaking to it.
Well, I, I kind of thought you were talking in favor of it, though.
Oh, you might be able to detect that, yes, very perceptive, Ed.
It's after 10 o'clock, we are getting a little punchy up here, so I'm just gonna say a couple little things, it's time, we need all these arguments about the benefits or the, that ship sailed several years ago, right now we have adult use and, and medical use approved in the state of California, currently we have people availing themselves of both products, living in our town, and we have handcuffed our, our two vendors by not allowing them to compete openly with this, these, this new state-approved way of doing business. It's not fair to our vendors, but more importantly to me, I have full confidence in our vendors that if unleashed from our restriction on, on the adult use, they can put some of these illicit operations out of business and compete on a one-to-one with other, other folks who are delivering into town, so I wholeheartedly agree that if, if this is the product that is legal in the state of California, there's no reason for us to handicap our two vendors. With that, I would call for the vote.
Well, Al, Bob is a little more dramatic than you are in his...
Well, Ed, I will say, of the four or five cities that permit cannabis sales, we're the only one that restricts it to medical. Oxnard, what is it, Port Wanami, Ojai, they all have the, you know, generalized use, we're the only one that restricts it to medical, we need to change that.
Any more discussion, or can we have the vote?
Humble opinion, oh, yeah, how about that?
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
No.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Oh, golly. Oh, golly, this is tough for me because I was very much in favor of the medical and I'm not completely sold on the other. I'll vote reluctant. I.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries four to one with McNamee dissenting. And I have an ordinance title to read. Ordinance amending Thousand Oaks Municipal Code Title V, Chapter 29, Sections 5-29.01, 5-29.05, 5-29.08A, 5-29.11, 5-29.12A, 5-29.14, 5-29.18B, 5-29.24, 5-29.27D, 5-29.31C, 5-29.32E, 5-29.34A1, 5-29.34A2, 5-29.34A3, 5-29.34A6, 5-29.36H, and 5-29.37C regarding allowing adult use retail of cannabis and updated language to meet current standards. And amending, excuse me, amending Title IX, Chapter IV, Sections 9-4.202 and 9-4.2105 to include cannabis retailer as a permitted use in the M1 zone.
Thank you. And now we go to our city manager comments.
Thank you so much, Mayor Engler. We'll be back here a week from tonight for our final regular council meeting before the council's scheduled summer recess. There are a variety of items set. Certainly a lighter meeting than this evening. There's a lot of fiscal year closeout items. We'll receive annual reports from the council on aging and from the youth commission. And we'll hear an item from West River Hospital regarding a needed legislative action to prepare for a medical facility behind the Tosh Surgical Hospital. That's it. I wish everybody a very happy Fourth of July weekend.
And we do have a closed session after this meeting and I'll turn it over to our city attorney, Ms. Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are four closed session matters. Two of them are public employee performance evaluations pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1 for the city attorney and the city manager. And the other two are conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 with city designated representatives, Mayor Engler and Human Resources Director Tim Giles, with unrepresented employees, city attorney and city manager. It is unlikely anything will be reported following those closed sessions.
Okay, very good. Thank you all for attending tonight and being such willing participants in what we do here for the citizens. Thank you very much.